Johnny, catch your text. Hope you're feeling better. You look good.
Do you? It's cold. Oh, boy. Are you trying to stay away from the wife?
I gotta say, stay away from the missus. You know.
I remember that.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Everyone's attention, please. The time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session of the Town Council to order. Can everyone please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everyone for coming this evening. Just for folks at home, if anyone wants to watch the meeting, the Town Council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. I want to start tonight by offering condolences. We lost one veteran since we last met. I'd like to extend condolences to the family of Michael B. Lynch. He served in the U.S. Marines and the U.S. Army. He passed away on April 4th. Can I have a moment of silence for Mr. Lynch's family members and friends? Thank you very much. We will start off with approval of our minutes from our April 8th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Seconded. Seconded by Ms. Riggles. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Announcements for the President, myself, I do not have any, but I do have our Town Clerk who would like to make some announcements regarding the election this coming Saturday. So Tina, come on up, please.
All righty, first, the 2005 Street List is now available hot off the press. Just came in today. So if you would like to purchase a copy, they're $20, or you can ask for an electronic copy. Just let us know. All righty, so this weekend is the election for Town Council, the School Committee, and the Library Trustees. The polls are open, as you wish, at 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the middle school on Mount Prospect Street. We have received 127 vote-by-mail applications, and 94 absentees have come through. So it's 221 people have voted or gotten ballots by now. Absentee voting is still available until noon time this week Friday. If you are unable to vote during our office hours, which are 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., let me know. Email me at tlarson@bridgewaterMA, and I will meet you here. I'm here at 7:00 in the morning. Just let me know you're here. I'll let you in the door. You can do your absentee voting and go on your day if you'd like. If you'd prefer an evening, tomorrow, Wednesday, or Thursday, just let me know, and I will be here to allow you to vote, so that nobody is missing an opportunity. After noon time on Friday, nobody, whether I let you in or not, okay? So the state deadline is noon time Friday. So absentee voting is still available until noon time Friday. All right. If you received a ballot by mail and have not returned it yet, please do so. It has to be in the drop box by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. The current forecast for this weekend, Saturday in particular, is not very good. So you're going to see all the devoted supporters of the candidates with their raincoats and umbrellas and holding signs for the candidates outside the polls. So I look forward to seeing all of you at the polls. And if there are no more questions, text me, call me, whatever. Let me know that you want to vote outside of our regular office hours, and thank you.
Thank you, Tina. All right, we will move on to proclamations. We have a couple this evening. The first one I would like to read, this is in recognition of Lieutenant Scott Hile of the Bridgewater Police Department. So proclamation reads as such. Whereas, yeah, please, come on up, guys. Whereas Lieutenant Scott R. Hile has served the Bridgewater Police Department with distinction for 15 years. And whereas Lieutenant Hile is recognized as an impressive leader demonstrating exceptional abilities in both operations and administration. And whereas in recognition of his leadership, Lieutenant Hile was nominated to attend the prestigious invitation-only FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. And whereas a 10-week academy program included rigorous coursework and the challenging Yellow Brick Road, a 6.1-mile run through hilly wooded terrain developed by the U.S. Marines. And whereas Lieutenant Hile successfully completed the program and graduated from the FBI National Academy Session 293 on March 13th, 2025. And whereas Lieutenant Hile is only the third Bridgewater Police Department executive to be selected for and graduate from this esteemed program in the past 20 years. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts does hereby recognize and commend Lieutenant Scott R. Hile for his outstanding service, dedication to the Bridgewater Police Department and the community, and his graduation from the FBI National Academy. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everybody for their support and dedication through this process. It wasn't easy. It's 10 weeks away from the house and family and the town and my job. But at the same point, I just want to thank everybody. The support means a lot.
I think Scott has just a couple of things he would just like to give you in appreciation. We appreciate your support and recognize the importance of leadership training for our personnel. There was no cost to us, and as you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, he was selected from candidates across the country for this prestigious program. And at the end of the day, nobody could do it for him. Scott had to do it himself. So it's the 10 long weeks, and he did it. And so thank you very much for your support, all of you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you again.
All right, excellent. We also have a second proclamation regarding Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025. And I'll defer to Counselor Chase for this proclamation. Counselor Chase.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This proclamation I will read. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees in our town, trees wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts does hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the Town of Bridgewater, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I'd like to present this, if I could, please. Mr. Jamian, would you care to step forward to, Nicole?
Sure, I'll do that.
Nicole Holmes, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chase, for that as well. All right, moving on, we have Citizens Open Forum. So again, got a good crowd tonight. So I'll start off by just saying that due to Massachusetts Open Meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. Please, when you come up, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. I'll try and give you a five-second sign when you're close to the end. So please recognize that and wrap up your comments when you see it. I will open it up. Anyone like to come up and start us off? Nicole, please come on up.
Nicole Holmes, 80 Old Farm Road. Thank you very much, President Perry and Counselor Chase and the rest of the councilors for the Arbor Day proclamation. On behalf of the Tree Committee, I did want to just reiterate the importance of us doing this every year. Since the reformation of our Tree Committee, we've just found out that we received Tree City USA designation for the second year, which is great news. The Arbor Day proclamation is really part of one of four standards that we need to meet, and we need to meet that every year. So we need to ensure that we have our Arbor Day proclamation and a celebration of Arbor Day. So this year, actually, the Tree Committee will be planting trees, replanting the trees that have been lost in the Cottage Street Playground on this Friday, April 25th, at 10:00 a.m. So anyone is welcome to join us, and we would love to have you there as we replace those trees. Just a few more notes, just the four standards that we do need to meet every year. In addition to the Arbor Day proclamation, we need to have a standing tree committee or a tree board, which we meet. We need to maintain our public tree ordinance, which we currently have in our town code. And we need to continue to have an annual forestry budget of $2 per capita, which is really part of the DPW budget. And I think that's really it. So again, thank you very much for this support of the status. We're digging into it a little bit more deeply as well, because we have learned that the Tree City USA status will help us attain more environmental grants. So it's definitely beneficial as we fill out those grants, so we should continue to do so. And finally, I just wanted to congratulate the Williams Intermediate School fifth-grade science classes for participating in our Arbor Day poster contest. And I wanted to specifically thank the three teachers, which is Mrs. DeSantis, Mrs. Corrigan, and Mrs. Slavsky. They definitely go above and beyond every year to facilitate the poster contest. When you leave, there's a board out there with our three local winners. The three local winners were Harper Como, Chloe Rowan, and Luli Loy. And their posters are amazing. We unfortunately had to select only one to send to the state competition, and we sent Harper Como, so you can check them all out on your way out, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Come on up.
Raya Jamian, Aldrich Road. I happen to chair the Tree Committee. I just want to add two things. One, the driving force behind us becoming a Tree City and the posters out there and working with students is Nicole. If you ever want anybody that's really good on the committee, you pick Nicole. One other thing, I've mentioned to this committee before that the structure of the Tree Committee allows us to have an arborist. We do not have one, because the town also requires that the people on committees be town residents. That came up before, and I believe we talked about changing the town code to allow somebody to come in from outside of town. But the good news is, we do have a town resident, Steve Dempsey, who is on your agenda tonight. I simply want to, we've met him, we like him, and I just want to encourage you to approve him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Come on up.
Krista Jamian, Aldrich Road, 220 Aldrich Road. To continue on the environmental theme, today is Earth Day. And I just wanted to let you know that through the Town Council Clerk, Deborah Ward, I sent some information about a webinar that will be happening on April 30th over Zoom, which deals with our looming water crisis. Is it here already? And water has been a big issue, a big source of conversation and concern in the Town of Bridgewater. It is a big issue worldwide. We are losing our groundwater, our fresh water, everywhere, not just here in our town, but everywhere. And we will have three speakers who will address different scenarios and also present some solutions, which we can do in our own backyards and what is happening in different places around the world and in this country as well. So I hope you get that information, and if you want to attend, you need to register so that you can get the link. And if you have any issues with that, please contact me, and I'm happy to help with registration, and hope that townspeople will attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Hi there. My name is Kate Diversa. I'm a proud class of 2014 graduate of the high school. And I currently live in Boston, but my parents still currently reside at 135 Jennifer Circle, and I'm just requesting permission to speak about the.
Make the motion to allow that.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Riggles. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Kate Diversa. I'm a graduate of the class of 2014 from Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. And I am here today to ask that you please allow the proposed override to go to ballot. My positive experiences in the BR school district have really helped shape me to be the person that I am today. These experiences have given me a strong foundation that I need not to have just a successful career, but also to just be a well-rounded individual and have a very rich personal life. And so as a student, while at BR, I enjoyed a slate of engaging and rigorous courses that helped prepare me for the future. Without adequate funding, electives and AP classes are going to be cut, and gaps in student schedules will be filled with study periods. If this happened while I was a student, I would not have been able to take AP English courses with teachers such as Mr. DePont-Brian and Mr. Hayhurst, which helped me realize that I was capable of college-level literary study and that I also loved the subject, which has led me to become a public high school English teacher. I also wouldn't have had the opportunity to learn from a math teacher named Mr. Healy, who was truly the only math teacher that got me to really understand and grasp the subject. And my successes in his class led me to ace a graduate-level statistics course, so I thank him for that. I graduated with honors from Stone Hill College in 2018. I studied abroad at Oxford. I've earned a Master's of Education degree at Harvard. And now I'm pursuing my second Master's degree at Middlebury College. And I truly don't believe any of this would have been possible without the experiences that I had at BR. And I know that there are many, many graduates who have similar stories. I am not the only one. I hopefully have a little more time. I would also just like to say that extracurricular activities were also really formative experiences for me. I was a varsity swimmer for all four years in high school. I met some of my best friends on that team, some of who I am still connected with today. I have lunch plans with one on Friday here in Bridgewater. And I was also a part of the school bands program from fifth grade through 12th grade. I was the drum major of the marching band. And again, these experiences helped me develop myself, develop my confidence, my leadership, my ability to be on a team, contribute to an organization. And if opportunities like these are cut for students, they are really going to miss out. And I can't imagine what my experience would have been like had I not had all the amazing opportunities that I had at BR. And so I kind of just share a little bit about my experience to just help underscore the importance of this override, the importance of putting it on the ballot for people to really take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ashley Mallard, 270 Grange. I had Kate in seventh grade and in ninth grade. She listened to me tell stories about my experience at Stone Hill, and then went on to Stone Hill and also did the same thing as me and went on to study abroad, so I'm really proud of her. She reached out and said, "What can I do? Because I want kids in the future to have the same opportunities that I have right now." I know that many of you heard me speak to this at a subcommittee the other night. But just to be clear, as well as I posted about this on Facebook, that the superintendent announced 76 non-professional status members will be laid off, with layoffs pushing higher into professional status. And specifically, the hits are going to be taken most at the high school to minimize the impact on the elementary school. I know at one point we were hearing class size could be up to 37, but the goal is to minimize the impact on those most valuable ages of learning. Still not going to be under 30, though. It's just the high school's going to be devastated in turn, okay? We're talking the loss of electives. We're talking maybe the cut of language down to two years bare minimum for college entrance. We're talking sports fees that could be anywhere between $900 and $1,000 a kid per sport. So one family with two kids, if they played three sports, are either going to have the conversation of who doesn't get to do it, or your family's out six grand. Come on. This is a no-brainer. You'll pay less in tax increases than you would in sports fees. And, you know, people said online, "Well, why do I care about sports? This is not the priority." Absolutely it is not. That's why the superintendent is going to attempt to charge a total funded fee so that the minimal amount we can put into the classroom will be exceeded. But I just want, I know there's sometimes this idea that there isn't enough information out there, so I just want you to hear some of the, you know, Ms. Watson hasn't confirmed this for me, but when you say electives, I want you to hear the variety and richness of electives that our students have to offer. The business department will basically be devastated. That takes away personal finance, investing fundamentals, principles of business, business law, college accounting, marketing and entrepreneurship, integrated computer applications, programming, Java, AP computer science, AP microeconomics, Photoshop, web design, video editing, and cybersecurity to feed them right into BSU. Take that away, okay? The art department, not sure if we're going to have someone in there, and that's drawing and painting and ceramics and portfolio, which includes AP classes. We're talking an ELA that could be media strategies, creative writing, performance and theater, intro to college writing, diverse voices in literature, film and literature, sports media, things that keep kids interested in school.
Thank you, Ashley.
Frank Souza, 596 Main Street. The state has seen the need for ADU housing to be a maximum of 900 square feet. The Bridgewater Senior Housing has a list that will take two years to get an apartment, and one becomes available, it may not be in Bridgewater. A number of our seniors and others who have lived in their same apartments for years are having trouble paying their rent because of the high cost of the average rent in Bridgewater. They may no longer need a three-bedroom apartment, but can't find a smaller one that they can afford. The state plan calls for an ADU to be up to 900 square feet. The zoning board wants it to be 800 square feet in Bridgewater. I believe the 900-square-foot unit is what most senior couples need and are looking for. This size enables the unit to have two bedrooms. Why do I believe the size unit is needed? I, like many others, have medical conditions that cause us to get up three to four times during the night. My wife is a light sleeper, and she is still working, so she needs a good solid night's sleep to get up in the morning to go off to work. And with this, my waking her up, it just doesn't happen. The 900-square-foot unit will meet the needs of many, not just the seniors. The unit I am trying to build above my garage is planned for a couple in a similar situation as my wife and me. Moving from the apartment they are now living in to the one I will be building and renting to them will save them about $500 a month in rent. This will be a big help because he can only work part-time. We have to do something to help these people, as well as the owners of homes that need help in paying for the ever-rising taxes and insurance cost. Owners able to convert existing space of 900 square feet into an apartment will provide them with rental income that will enable them to pay taxes and stay in their homes. Some people have been forced to sell their homes and move into apartments out of Bridgewater. I ask you to take this very seriously and approve it with the 900-square-foot top limit as set by the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Good evening. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. As far as the proposition, excuse me, Proposition 2 and 1/2 I see is on the discussion, the agenda tonight. I hope that means you're not deciding to approve it automatically tonight to go on the ballot. I'm hoping that there will be discussion tonight to decide, you know, is it all or nothing? Is there places where you can tweak things, move things? I would like to see more discussion as to what all that means and how that pertains to years from now. You know, is this a Band-Aid? Is this something that we're going to have to come to again sooner than later? I want to see those numbers. Also, if somebody could give us a better idea of, if it was to be the way it is right now, what does that mean for per taxpayer? Is like, how much is that per $100,000 value of your home? Can I, I want to see numbers. I don't want to see guessing, "Oh, some people, it's going to be $1,000. Some people, it's going to be this." I want to see more accurate figures, and I think that will help everybody when they go to the polls, whenever this, if this is to go to the polls. And I have a feeling it's going to be, but I just would like more discussion, and I'm hoping that's what's tonight. I'm hoping that's not your deciding tonight. As far as the accessory dwellings, I'm still a little confused on it. I did attend the meeting last week, and it helped me realize a few things to hear. I was glad to hear that it's a single-family home area. I am still concerned about how close it can be to a neighbor's property. And I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Souza about making it the 900 square feet. I think 800 would be fine. And I wasn't under the impression that it's, you know, what's the guarantee that it's going to be cheaper rent, you know, for people? And I always thought it was going to be for family members, so I'm still a little confused on that. But I would like to hear more about it. So that's, I just want to hear more on the Proposition 2 and 1/2. More discussion tonight, not a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Sean Kennedy, 487 Summer Street. Good evening, Bridgewater. Good evening, councilors. This evening, a request was made to audit, a forensic audit for the town by a council member earlier in the week. That was denied. I think that kind of highlights an issue that we have in our town government. So as a citizen, I'd also like to say that we also need a forensic audit if we're going to be asking people to up their taxes, millions of dollars, going into the next fiscal year. People want to know where their money's going. They want to know that it's being spent appropriately. It will gain some trust with the people, and that's what a lot of people have been asking me about as I've been running. I also hope that with the way our town rules and procedures run, that with a new board, we can reform the rules so that we can ensure that items brought by councilors are actually put on the agenda. Right now, that is kind of, the availability to gatekeep the agenda is at the president's level. I spoke with a counselor about this earlier in the week, and again, I'd like to see that, you know, as we're voted on, as we vote in representatives, representatives can bring any item that they want to be seen by the council itself to be voted on. I think that's only fair if you voted on by the people. As for the override, I spoke at the Budget and Finance, I spoke last meeting on this. I'd like to suggest just dividing the article. If it's too high of a number, just divide it, vote on the four big items individually, bring it back to the council, and take a final vote on it. I think that's within, that's something you can do within Robert's Rules of Order. It looks like it might be a good idea to get the number down. And I also want to thank the Finance Committee for rejecting the $25,000 flagpole proposal. I think it was the right call, regardless of the politics surrounding the flag issues. Asking residents to pay $25,000 for a project like this while also asking for an override is just sending the wrong message to everyone in town. So to close this out, I'm running for Town Council, District 3. I'm elected. I would like to see more transparency, better communication, and just generally responsible budgeting. I do think we need a forensic audit and a review of the charter and council rules as well to ensure that we're running this as efficiently as possible. I want to make sure that all councilors and the public have a fair voice, and their voices are being heard. And we need to really work on restoring trust in Bridgewater's town government as a whole. So thank you all. I'd appreciate your vote. Bridgewater on Saturday, Town Council, District 3, Sean Kennedy. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sean.
Kimberly Burke, 14 Heather Lane. Councilmembers, to say that I was gobsmacked at the conclusion of the previous Town Council meeting would be an understatement. It was not that the meeting was five hours long. It was not that the councilmembers argued with each other. It was that one councilmember seemed unaware of both state law and town ordinances while simultaneously insulting the LGBTQ community by asking questions about the pride flag. To be clear, there are no actions in front of the legislative body that will designate Bridgewater as a sanctuary city. This is a loaded term used by far-right ideologues looking to sow disinformation and division. State law passed in 2017 describes in detail what authority local police have to insert themselves in regards to immigration. In a word, none. Additionally, the Town Council member's suggestion that raising the pride flag would result in the town raising Nazi flags highlights that they were not aware of a 2021 ordinance requiring Town Council approval of all flags raised by the town. What is truly horrifying about that equivocation is the attempt to associate the pride flag, a symbol of civil rights, with the fascist Nazi regime. A regime that persecuted, arrested, tortured, and sent to concentration camps members of the LGBTQ community. This group had a higher concentration camp death rate than any other prisoner group. I repeat, LGBTQ people sent to Nazi concentration camps had a higher death rate than any other group. Statements made equating a pride flag and a Nazi flag should be denounced and rescinded.
Thank you.
How you guys doing? Brad McKinnon, 86 Spring Street. Got my list here. I'm bringing the list back. It's been a little bit. So last week, I had a few good things we talked about, including Greg and Cam Lund, the hockey player there. I did forget, I gave recognition to Bob, Officer Hennessy, and Officer Kingsley for all they did, but I forgot to leave out a friend of mine, Brian Ferrera and his wife, who took all three, the West Bridgewater, the Bridgewater communities, put them together and got them to raise some money for Greg. And then they took them into his basement, so that's what I forgot for there. TJ Squared, like I said, just good news here until the end. TJ Squared, first in Massachusetts, 38th in the world. That's pretty incredible. Just say, comes out of Bridgewater-Rainham High School. Today's also Earth Day, and as I was here last meeting, I set up a town cleanup at just the town landing. Pat Neri took care of the nip, and Kevin, you, the blinds, and BSU took care of the ironworks. I don't want to take all the credit because I definitely didn't do all the work there. I just drove around and picked up trash bags. First Responders' Day is this weekend, also on Saturday, 2 to 5 at 80 Spring Street. It's an awesome day. I mean, it's the third year, year two. Our DA, Mr. Cruz, got involved and really turned it up a notch, and I'm really excited to see what happens this year. Mr. Loretty, Mr. Perry, and Mr. Chase, who knows how the election goes. This could be your last meetings. I do wish you luck at the election on Saturday. And I would just ask at the end, if you, all three of you, could have a little brief description on what you bring to the table and all that, just for the citizens. And then just my one question for all of you to ask is, why aren't we flushing hydrants again? Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Greg Martin, 493 High Street. Veterans commit suicide at a rate of 22 a day. Veteran suicide knows no demographic boundaries. Veteran suicide lives here in Bridgewater. One of the things that we're doing about it, as you all know, I'm the veterans agent for the town, on a monthly basis, we bring veterans together. We've done it twice now at Cafe Madeline for Coffee Hour. The intent of that program is, again, a monthly program to bring our veterans together. And the strategy is really threefold. Number one, first and foremost, is to bring veterans together, provide a social opportunity, provide a community, so that we can educate the veterans. They can meet me, they can meet others that they can relate to. Number two, we want to do that at venues here in town, like Cafe Madeline. They've been very gracious in hosting this event, and no sooner does the event finish, and they're asking me, "When's the next one?" So there's no lack of support from the community in that regard. And then number three is the nonprofit organizations that sponsor these events. So when I go to these vendors, when I go to these businesses, I'm not asking for a free handout. We're just asking if we can use their venue. We want to bring, you know, X amount of veterans in. Can you give me a price? And, you know, they're very generous. They give me, you know, a cost price for the most part. But then we bring in nonprofit organizations to sponsor, and this is a great opportunity for nonprofit organizations as well. And this is the call to action that I would, that I would call here in this forum for the citizens and for the Town Council. To support nonprofit organizations, to support veteran causes, we really need to mitigate veteran suicide. Let's bring veterans together. Let's provide a community for them. Let's provide venues for them. Let's provide support for them. Lastly, I'll end on a better note. Our eldest veteran in the community, Mr. David Sudhalter, turned 98. The last week, I think, was his birthday, so I just wanted to wish Mr. Sudhalter a happy birthday. There is, I know that the Senior Center, they have a program. I think they have a cane for the eldest member of the community. The Boston Post cane, so there's a story behind that, I'm sure. I'm coming up with an idea that we can maybe recognize our eldest veteran in the community. I don't know, maybe with a sword or something like that. But, you know, if you have any ideas, feel free to reach out. And last, I almost forgot the most important part, public service announcement. So next week, on the 30th, we're having our next monthly event at the RIV. And it's for veterans, so if you're a veteran, if you know a veteran, come on out to the RIV. It's completely free. It's going to be sponsored by, and I hope I don't get this wrong, the Greater Bridgewater Women of Today. Perfect. Very generous organization. They've been very helpful in the past with other things, and they're going to sponsor the event, and it's going to be completely free for the veterans. So hope to see a good turnout next Wednesday. And this Saturday, as Brad said, the Fire for Effect, come on out on Saturday for the-- First Responders' Day.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to come up and speak?
Hi, everyone. Christine Banky, 36 Magnolia Way. I just wanted to stand in front of you guys tonight just to let you know, last week was a school committee meeting where they addressed the impacts of a budget that would potentially be passed if an override fails. In that event, 76 non-professional status teachers would be eliminated. However, there are not enough non-professional status teachers that can be eliminated without running into compliance issues. Therefore, they would have to cut into professional status teachers, which implies that there would be more positions cut out of general ed classrooms, increased class sizes. Along with those increased class sizes, it was spoke about earlier that the high school would be taking a big hit. That indeed will be the case. Superintendent Powers, I hope that you all had a chance to review that presentation, discussed how that will run into scheduling issues. A lot of the high school students will be forced into numerous amount of study halls per day, which will lead to the potentially, in classes, their larger classes will be classes of 40 to 50 students. Now, do they have enough room to accommodate 40 to 50 students in a classroom multiple times throughout the day? The answer is no. They only have a few classrooms that can accommodate 40 to 50 students, therefore, study halls. Also, you think about the fact that teachers need prep periods. If you have less instructors for your classes, you have less time for prep periods, but they're required to have those times where they're able to prep for their classrooms. Therefore, more study halls. Okay, then they run into issues of where are these kids getting their accreditations? Where can they go to get the things that they need? They're going to have to start looking outsourced, outside of the school, to get accreditations to graduate from high school. Along with that, they did recognize that the class sizes would go to 31 to 36 students in the middle school, 28 to 33 students per class in the intermediate schools, and 25 to 31 in the elementary schools. But I would challenge you to think about the fact that non-professional status teachers are eliminated, professional status teachers are starting to be cut into, then there's seniority issues. We have younger teachers who are entering the district making least amount of money, that means they're under professional status, if you're under four years, eliminated from their positions. So those of higher, higher up on the podium, so to speak, are moved potentially from the high school, from the middle school, now we have high schooler and middle school teachers coming to the elementary school level and teaching kindergarten. Some may like that, and I would say, I would challenge that that's a big task to go from a high school level to go to an elementary school level. Sorry, one more second. Along with that, staff cuts would mean elective cuts. They had mentioned that there is going to be elective cuts, I think she thoroughly went over that. Special education issues, that becomes a problem. Special education issues are still going to be an issue. We can't, we don't have the teachers to address those issues going forward, so it's still going to be running into issues of compliance, which is a problem for this school district.
Can we wrap up, Christine? Just five more seconds?
Yep. There's also the toss-around of removal of the base program. This is a huge program for all of our elementary school parents on both levels. Before and after-school care, a lot of parents rely on that to get to their own positions. These are just some of the things that are going to be addressed and potentially cut in the next year without a passive override.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Good evening. Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. First, if I'm correct, the council will be reorganizing after the election, so you might be seated somewhere else next time, but I wanted to thank this particular iteration of the council for being so welcoming, listening to all of the citizens' comments every two weeks. I really feel affirming and welcome to come here and share my views and hopefully make some impact that way. So thank you for that, and I hope, whatever the iteration is next time, that it will do the same. I wanted to make just a couple of comments about the flag resolutions, which I hope you will pass tonight. Passing those will prove that we are a welcoming community, and I think we need to do that because we said we were in tabling the welcoming resolution. So I hope that we will raise the flags to state our welcoming to all groups. Nothing negative has come out of those flag raisings, only positives, as you've heard other people speak before you in the past. One of my concerns is that there has been fear mongering, not only amongst some council members, but also back and forth on Facebook about, well, if we keep approving these flags, we're eventually going to have to fly a flag we don't want to fly. But I just want to reiterate that we have an ordinance that states clearly how we deal with any requests for flag raisings, and I'm confident that any iteration of the council will make sound decisions about not flying anything that would be harmful or discriminatory. So I hope you will continue this tradition and stand up for being a welcoming town. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else? Go once, go twice. All right, thank you for those that came up to speak here to start off the meeting. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have appointments. First up, we have Joshua Early for the DEIB Committee for the term of 2025-2026. Do I have a motion for Mr. Early's approval?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chase?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion on the nomination?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Ellenberg.
Thank you. I think that we should not be establishing a DEI committee. I made an error last week voting for it. We should not be having a DEI committee because that is going to make us unable to get federal grants. Now, I know people are saying Massachusetts is not going to get any anyways. We do not need to be doubling down on something that denies us grants. So that is not a smart move, and therefore, I would vote against it, against his appointment because it's to this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Any other comments?
Can I ask for a roll call vote on that?
Certainly. All right, so we'll move this to a roll call vote.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second appointment. We have Kathleen Reed for the SAVE Committee, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for her approval?
So moved.
Ms. Strigles, seconded by Mr. Chase. Any further comments regarding this nomination? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ms. Reed to the SAVE Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have Amanda Mattel, Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate member, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for Ms. Mattel?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Strigles, seconded by her second. By Mr. Chase. Any comments or questions about this candidate? Seeing none, all those in favor of her appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Jane Maraschino for the Elder Affairs Commission, term of 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for her approval?
Motion to.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. McGrath, seconded by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, all those in favor of her appointment to the Elder Affairs Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And next up, we have Stephen Dempsey for the Tree Committee, term of 2025 to 2028. Motion to approve.
I'd like to make that motion.
Certainly, Mr. Lindy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Ellenberg. Any further comments or questions? Ms. Strigles.
I just want to say how nice it is that we have a resident, despite all of our best efforts for a while trying to find one, a resident finally raised their hand to give back to their community so that we're able to keep this Bridgewater position. So I'm really excited that we have somebody.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Any other comments? Mr. Lindy.
Very talented resident, I might add, so I'm very happy to see this.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Yep. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Dempsey to the Tree Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, we have Thomas Praddy for the Planning Board, term of 2025 to 2030. Do I have a motion for Mr. Praddy?
So moved.
Ms. Strigles, seconded by Ms. McGrath. Any further discussion on the appointment?
I would just comment that I'm happy that our boards, committees, and commissions are filling out the way that the town residents deserve.
Thank you very much. I agree. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mr. Praddy for the Planning Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move to hearings. We have a few this evening. The first one will be Order OFY 25-036, laying out and accepting a private way of Firefly Lane. This was advertised in the Enterprise on 4/11, and the Planning Board did recommend this with a condition at their 2/19/25 meeting, so we'll get into that. So I'll go ahead and open the hearing at 7:50. And is there a petitioner here to present? Please come on up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Daniel Viera, I'm an attorney from the town of Easton, so to the extent I need permission to speak.
Are you representing the?
Yeah.
Yep, so go right ahead.
In the interest of full disclosure, I graduated from Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School in 1983, and my mother-in-law may say differently, she's a longtime school teacher, but somehow I squeezed out a career of 35 years as a lawyer, and to the point that some people have mentioned behind me. An excellent experience at Bridgewater Rainham, and I hope that continues for many years to come. The matter that is before you is the acceptance of Firefly Lane. That is a road that's been constructed in conformity with all of the rules and regulations, both of the town of Bridgewater, the subdivision control law, and your planning board, and in some instances, in excess of what was required by those rules. I know that the Planning Board has given a favorable recommendation for that, and we're hopeful that the council will accept it this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions of my client.
Okay, great. Let's see, we'll just start off with general questions from the public. Anybody have any questions regarding this? Seeing none, anybody from the public who want to speak in favor of this project? Or this acceptance of the road? Seeing none, anyone speaking in opposition to accepting this road? Seeing none. I will definitely now open up from questions from the councilors. Any councilors have any questions regarding this? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it my, my understanding is, just so the residents know, that you guys give us a $10,000 maintenance fee and stuff, so you do give us money for the BTW and all that to maintain this road once we accept it?
That is exactly correct. That's part of the process.
Okay, I just didn't think residents really knew that, and I think it's important that they know that you do that for us. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Seeing, I have nothing further as well, so I thank you for the information.
Thank you.
So I will go ahead and close the hearing at 7:52. We need to take two votes on this, so first, I need a motion to find that the laying out is required by common convenience and necessity, so I have a motion for that.
So moved.
Ms. Strigles, seconded by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, and I can take a vote for it on this, all those in favor of finding that the laying out is required by common convenience and necessity, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The second vote now we need to take is approving laying out of the way itself, so I have a motion, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Strigles, seconded by Mr. Chase. Any further questions regarding that? Seeing none, all those in favor of laying of the way, laying out the way, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to Petition P 2025-020, petition for National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., joint or identical pole location on Stetson Street. We advertised this in the 4/11 Enterprise. I will go ahead and open the hearing at 7:54. And we have a petitioner here. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and let us know what we got going on here.
Jared Aker, representing National Grid, on 30 East Ashland Street in Brockton. We're looking for a midspan pole to install our closer. Basically, it's just a device on the pole top that's going to help improve reliability and safety for residents and our crews as well.
Okay, very good. Let's see, while you're just there, we'll just go through a little, are there any general questions from the public regarding this? Seeing none, anyone from the public speaking in favor of this? Seeing none, anyone speaking against? Seeing none. I will go ahead and open the questions from the council. Any council members have any questions regarding this? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your information. We'll close the hearing at 7:55. And I will entertain a motion to approve this petition.
So moved.
Mr. Lindy, seconded by Mr. Chase. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
And the last hearing we have this evening, proposed zoning ordinance, DFY 25-014, zoning amendment for accessory dwelling units. This again was advertised in the 4/11 Enterprise. I will open up this hearing now at 7:55. I don't believe we have any petitioner here. Can I have that paperwork here? So again, I'll just review it for everyone. This was sponsored by myself, but this was, again, brought forward to be in compliance with the state law regarding ADUs. And I'll just read a brief explanation for the residents here. So for the last few months, the CED, Department and Planning Board have worked on language for an amendment for the council's consideration based on Section 8 of the Affordable Homes Act, amends the zoning act to allow ADUs up to 900 square feet to be built by right in single-family zoning districts within Massachusetts, which replaces our current language that restricted it to 800 square feet. The state law went into effect February 2nd, and this would obviously get the town up to speed with the state law in regards to this. So with that, any general questions from the public? Does anyone want to come up and ask any questions regarding this?
Did you open to him?
I did. Anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Any further questions or comments from the town council?
Could you clarify the 800 versus 900? Are we voting?
So the 800 was our prior language called Expanded Living Area in Place, which counted at 800 square feet, and that was our current language in our zoning laws, so we're increasing that to 900 to match the state law.
I would only ask that on page 67, it still references 800 under the Expanded Living Space, in-law living area, so that, just propose to strike that.
Is that in the actual language for the zoning amendment in there?
No, just in the following documents.
What page?
67.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Paul.
Expanded Living Space. It's that same language that's in above.
Oh, I see. Okay, so yeah, probably a script errors, but we can change that to 900. So just make a motion.
Make that motion.
Yep, there you are, second.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on that. Thank you. Any further questions on it by any council members? Seeing none. I will close the hearing, 7:58, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as written.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Strigles, seconded by Mr. Chase. Any further questions or discussion?
I would just, I would just note, in my professional capacity, I am currently helping two specific clients either put an ADU on their current home or purchase one for the purpose of adding or purchase one for the purpose of adding an ADU. Both will allow an elderly family member to move in and avoid a nursing home. So I will say that this in and of itself will be a saving grace for a lot of our community, allowing this. And 900 square feet doesn't seem like a big jump from 100 square feet, from 800 to 900, just 100 square feet, but that could be one bedroom. That could be a 10 by 10 room that someone really needs to live a prosperous life. So I think that this is going to be a great thing for Bridgewater.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Any further comments? Seeing none. I will entertain a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And wraps up our hearings for this evening. We do not have any licensed transactions or presentations. We will move to Town Manager's report and an update on the fire station.
The work on the fire station continues to go well. As you can see from your packet, there's a number of tasks that are underway. The generator has been delivered. The transformer pad is going in. There's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing being roughed in, and metal frame going in, cement block in some of the areas that require that. And the budget is currently on track as well, so things are still moving along well.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Town Manager on the fire station?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Robinson, when is it going to be completed?
I think the hope is the end of this year or early of 2026, somewhere in that timeframe.
So they are moving along.
They're moving along.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much. There's no discussion items. Committee reports. Any committees want to make a report here this evening? I'll just mention that CED Committee did meet to review the ADU units, and we were in favor of that along the way. Probably shouldn't have mentioned that when we were discussing it. But the what we'll have coming up and legislation for action, both through the CED and Budget and Finance, did not review the orders. That order is being withdrawn at this time because we're reorganizing the procedure on that, which will probably happen going into next month. So that will be coming off legislation for action when we get there. All right, but we will move to legislation for action right now. So we will start with Order OFY 25-048, contract ratification for the Town Manager. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Yes, going back to... I'm sorry. Town Manager report if anyone had any requests for the Town Manager for the next meeting. Mr. Murphy did have something he wanted to ask.
As somebody requested tonight, would you mind checking on the hydrant flushing schedule for that? Thank you.
Anyone else have any requests while we're backtracking to that? Seeing none. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to legislation for action. So Order OFY 25-048, contract ratification for the Town Manager. Again, we kept this at the council level as we reviewed this as a council and executive session, and I believe we're at a contract satisfactory to the new Town Manager coming on in. Mr. Murphy, any further information or you want to share?
Nothing more than I had the pleasure of going back and forth with our potential incoming new Town Manager on this contract agreement. I thought he was fair, and the town itself gave up a few things. Well, Mr. Casanova-Davis also gave up a few things. Was over the course of a month worth of negotiating back and forth, and so this was the final iteration of that, where both sides came to an agreement that now the Town Council can vote upon. And so, very fair, very open. His communication was great, so looking forward to hopefully working together with Mr. Casanova-Davis.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve? By Mr. Chase, second by Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no.
Can I just say one thing, too?
Go right ahead.
I guess now that it's approved, the... Just would note that the start date for our new Town Manager is July 1st, 2025, his first date. And so I know that's important to folks to know that.
Yep, very good. Thank you. So as I just previously alluded to, Order OFY 25-049, the order for the tip agreement for 786 Broad Street, we are withdrawing that order to be reworked as an ordinance going forward. And some other things will be put in place for that. So that is being withdrawn. So we will move forward with Order OFY 25-050, acceptance of donation of Bridgewater Firefighters Association. I'll refer to Town Manager just to give us a quick overview on that again.
This was a donation of about $142 to allow for a purchase of a flag to be flown on the town common by the Firefighters Association.
Thank you. Let's see. And then Budget and Finance had a...
Three to zero to approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Go ahead, yes?
Did the Finance Committee vote to approve? I thought they disapproved.
This is, we're talking about the Firefighters Association.
Not on this one.
Okay, excuse me. Never mind.
All right.
Voted five to nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept a donation?
So moved.
Thank you. And Mr. Chase, second. All right, and or Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Order OFY 25-051, transfer order of the flag pole.
Budget and Finance voted three to nothing to approve, and Finance voted to not approve.
Yep. Yeah, five, nothing to approve. Okay. So again, that was reviewed by our Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Again, I'll ask Ms. Robinson to just give us a brief description again on this.
So in order to start the work, we need to have an appropriation. This would transfer $25,000 to an account where we could spend it from. The actual price that we received is $23,300 approximately. So we need to have that in place, and the timing is such that if we want the flag poles moved and ready to go for June 1st, we need to start it immediately.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lindy?
And just for the point of clarification, it's coming out of funds from this year's budget.
Yes.
FY 25, correct.
And any fundraising that we do receive would be taken as a miscellaneous revenue and lapsed free cash, and it could be put back in the account from which it's coming.
And again, can you go over which account that is coming from?
One-time stabilization fund.
Thank you very much. Again, fundraising continues to go on for this, and I believe over 3,000 has been raised. Oh, yes, Ms. Ellenberg.
Yes. Question. How much has been raised so far by the private sources? And are you aware of the person sequestering it for the town?
I think it's best directed to the council president.
Yes, yes. The Chair of the Bridgewater 4th of July Committee is taking that on, and there's so far, like I said, I believe they have about 3,000. Oh, yes.
Okay. You know that for a fact?
Very trustworthy individual. She's done fundraising for multiple things in town. Ms. Strigles?
I can say as someone who bought two bricks, I sent my donation to one account, and my 4th of July donation went to another account, so they are being separated.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles.
Okay.
All right. Any other... Actually, well, let me start off with asking for a motion and a second for discussion. So I have a motion to approve by Ms. Strigles, second by Mr. Chase for discussion. Any further discussion on the matter? Mr. Loretta?
Can you speak more to the Finance Committee's recommendation to not approve?
Turn it over to Budget and Finance Chair.
They basically completely went the opposite way that Budget and Finance did. They just voted unanimously. There was not a lot of discussion on it. There wasn't a lot of discussion on it on the Finance Committee. They just voted the complete opposite way of Budget and Finance.
Yeah, considering that this is supposed to be a community fundraised project, I don't think that we should be spending the money on this right now. That's just my personal opinion, so I would side with them on that. But again, it's not like there were any specifics, but I'm also, I'm on that side of the fence on this right now.
Thank you, Mr. Loretta. Any other questions? Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the residents brought up an idea of maybe having a store or something sponsor it to help. I was just wondering, if we wanted to ask PSU to maybe sponsor it and have their name on the flagpole, do you think we could do that?
Again, it could be taken up at a later date, again, or speak with the people doing the fundraising.
They could approach the PSU.
Again, I would approach... Well, again, for the fundraising, this is an appropriation that we're doing with the town, but the fundraising is...
No, I'm just saying if they don't make enough, because they're not...
Well, they're going to raise as much as they can, and I'm not sure what their timeframe is or how long they're collecting for, but they're trying to raise as much as they can.
But maybe we could ask, like, a store or BYU, and they could donate the rest, because I know some... We're going back and forth on it. I'd like to see the three flags.
Yeah, I mean, either yourself or talk with the Chair who's doing it and see what can be done. But again, it's all, again, to offset the cost of the town.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chase had a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to urge the council to consider approval of this measure. The council is no better than anyone else, certainly better than the Finance Committee, that for a period of months, we have spent a considerable amount of time in discussion of flags and flagpoles. And this proposal actually came forth through a number of channels, but with the cooperation and approval of the Veterans Council and of, I believe as well, of our Town Veteran Service agent. And after considerable discussion in the council, we arrived at a point of consensus that this was likely the best solution to the question of when, where, and how flags would be flown on town property in coordination with our flag raising ordinance. So my position frankly is that we, certainly far better than the Finance Committee, are privy to the discussion that has gone on and the many hours that have been devoted to it, and the consensus that we've already agreed to in principle. And as has been pointed out, these funds have been already budgeted and are there and ready for this purpose. And I think it's an appropriate purpose and one that we should approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Lindy?
I would also like to echo the comments of Council Chase. I think that neither the Town Manager nor the Finance Director would recommend anything out of line where we have funds in this fiscal year budget. It's this fiscal year. It's not next fiscal year, which we are wrestling with right now, and I think we should move forward with this.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, another comment.
Oh, Ms. Ellenberg, please go ahead.
Yes, just that I have had quite a number of constituents say, why are you spending money on this when we have an override pending? So I would say to set a good example, that we are being fiscally responsible. We don't approve this now. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Any other questions?
Can I ask for roll call?
Yes, that's fine. I was going to do the same. So we'll go for a vote, and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
And Mr. Loretta?
No.
Six in favor, two opposed.
Thank you very much. Next up, Order OFY 25-052, acceptance of Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs MVP Grant for the Hanson Farm Conservation Restriction Purchase. I'll just ask for a brief description from the Town Manager.
This grant is for $3 million from the State Municipal Vulnerabilities Program. It was submitted last year by Mr. Dutton and approved by the state to spend $3 million to allow the town to accept the purchase, the development rights of Hanson Farm.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Lindy?
Budget and Finance recommended three to zero to recommend to the full council.
All right, and Finance, similar?
They did five to zero.
Five to zero. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Lindy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strigles. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Order OFY 25-053, acceptance of a grant for the High Street Dam and Town River Restoration Project. Again, I'll ask for a brief description from the Town Manager.
We applied for and won an $11,000 grant to remove invasive species from the Town River in the area of High Street Dam, and that work needs to be completed by the end of June, and we're ready to go to have that done on time, so we're asking to accept the grant.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lindy?
Budget and Finance voted to recommend three to zero to the full council, and I did FinCom Act on the FinCom, five to zero.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the acceptance of this grant? By Mr. Lindy, second by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, transfer order, Conservation Easement Restriction for Hanson's Farm. Order OFY 25-054. Brief description again from the Town Manager.
This is actually a sister order, if you will, to the one, an item E regarding the MVP program. That program requires a 1% match for this particular grant, so this is money that's the CPEC Committee has recommended that be utilized for the match, and their actual application and their recommendation is in your packet.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lindy?
Budget and Finance voted three to zero to recommend to the full council, and the reason I keep looking over is they didn't approve the whole agenda, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the right track. Five to zero to recommend to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy, certainly. Do I have a motion to accept that transfer order? Ms. Lindy?
Sure.
Do I have a second? Mr. Chase. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next up, Order OFY 25-055, Proposition Two and a Half Ballot Question. So this one might take a little bit of time. But I will start off by stating that what I think that we'll do, obviously, we're going to vet this out as a council and go through all the individual items that are being proposed. I think we're going to put some numbers up on the screen, and we'll take this in, like I say, different pieces, at least to set up, I could say, discussion in what will potentially be on the override. There we go. All right. So what... And I do passing out sheets now to people? We'll pass some sheets around to the council members, and everyone in the crowd can see what's on overhead. So what we're seeing currently, the first one was just the initial override number that we put on out based on the school committee's request, roadway repairs. All the same. Budgetary cuts that were being made to general government, police, and fire for FY '26, and then services to meet community demands, including additional police, fire, DPW, council aging, things of that nature. Then we've had some work to try and bring this number down, so there's a couple of different versions that you're seeing down below, ranging from 7.8 million to 7.7 million, but both addressing different needs in each one. So what I will first probably suggest that we'll do is we'll just, like, take each grouping as a whole and discuss it as a council, and then kind of break down each category as we get down there, discuss what we want to see move forward, what we don't want to see move forward, and come up with a number hopefully by the end of this process. So the first one we'll certainly bring about is the Bridgewater School Committee number. As you see, it's $6,34,614.95. That is our number. That's being asked for the town of Bridgewater. Pretty much no wiggle room on that one. So just asking to the town attorney, just going to ask for a voice vote if we want to approve that particular number to go forward. Would that be within reason to do?
At this point, I would like to make a charter objection.
Hold up.
She has the right to make a charter objection.
She has the right to make a charter objection.
All right, make a charter.
Is this the first reading though? I believe this is the second.
Second reading, yes.
I'll have to check the rule, but I believe it had to be at the first reading.
So.
Anything to move forward. I'll, I'll look at the charter. You all can move forward. If I find that the charter doesn't say, or the rules and procedures don't say first reading, then I'll let you know.
Okay, so continue discussion.
Continue to move forward. I'll check now.
Thank you.
I would like to just mention that the language says, "A charter objection shall have privilege over all motions and must be raised at the call for a vote." Doesn't say first reading, second reading.
I'm going to take a look right now.
Well, I'm quoting the charter.
Well, I will let the town attorney to take a look at that, please. So until we get to that point, do I need a second on that motion for the charter objection? No, okay. Thank you.
We know why.
I would be happy to explain why. I would be happy to discuss numbers tonight, but I am making a charter objection to taking a vote tonight.
Well, I believe the charter objection kills all the further discussion if approved. So you're going to really set the timeline back here.
It does not kill the discussion. It merely prevents a vote from taking place because we need to delay the vote till we study things better.
All right.
I'm going to keep looking.
All right, that's fine. Okay, sorry. All right. Well, again, so the school committee number is where it's at, so I don't think there's any further discussion on that. The second area was critical roadway repairs. The initial number was suggested at $2 million. Second budget down below has a number of $500,000. I'll certainly open it up for any council comments or discussions on it. Just basically stating that, obviously, we've heard a number of residents in discussion looking to see road improvements made. Different ways of going about to get some of those repairs done. Number one, adding it to the budget. That would be there year after year, or to a debt exclusion down the line. Again, they could take care of a number of repairs at one time. But I think we're at a stage where we do need to set up some sort of financing to help.
I can wait.
Oh, go ahead. Thank you very much.
It was as I suspected, Section 2-7 Measures, Emergency Measures Charter Objection. 2-7C Charter Objection, "On the first occasion that a question on adoption of a measure is put to the town council, if a single member objects to the taking of the vote, the vote shall be postponed until the next meeting of the town council, whether regular or special." I believe this is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
So the charter objection is out of order.
Thank you. All right. So we'll continue our discussion. So again, as stated, so if we add something to the budget ongoing, which again would be recurring funds that would be budgeted each year, we would have monies to address the maintenance and repair of the roads that would be there each year. But again, that's a decision for us to make as a council, too. We want to add a number to this as well. And now, do you have a question? No, who wants to make a question? Go ahead. Counselor Murphy, please go ahead.
I just have a question for the town manager, or maybe Ms., or the Finance Director, sorry. To ask if you have the total dollar amount from the capital budget of the cost of the six roads, I believe it was six roads that we planned out, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with this group. I just want to be upfront that whether it be $2 million less, more, there's still a significant amount of money that will need to be raised by the town or acquired by the town to fix the substantial construction of those six major roadways. So I think what we're addressing here, and again, this is my opinion, is really just the maintenance budget for DPW to keep up with the roads that we don't have currently allocated to just road repair.
So while Ms. Greeney's looking for that, I would say that the communities I find have seen in the past that have the most success in road maintenance prescribe to dedicating themselves, putting aside a certain amount of money each year to address it. And it's never meant in an operating budget to cover all the costs or catch up. But certainly, Chapter 90 has proven, although it's a wonderful funding source, it's not sufficient. Having the discipline to put some number in, whether it's 500 or it's something else, to say, "We're making a stand and we're going to move forward" while we sort through the more challenging process of catching up on all those other roads means that you'll be able to, and stick to the discipline of every year, we're going to make sure that number stays in there, what people have voted for, gives you a chance to really start to catch up. And communities who do that find that over, you know, years, it does take time, actually get to where they're trying to get to. And that was the goal behind this while we put it forward. How are you doing?
I'd just like to say too, I guess, well, just continuing my comment while she's looking for the number. I think this is, you know, it would be a great start to set up a fund, and I'd be happy to sponsor a resolution to ensure that this money goes into account annually, and it's just to address road maintenance, which is a major issue in our town. I would suggest to my fellow counselors to start with a price of $500,000 in this override. To me, that's a much more digestible number. Would take a little bit longer to get us to where we need to be. But I would suggest a $500,000 increment for road repair in this override with a 2.5% increase annually, of which I would put into the resolution. So that 500,000, 2.5 annually raised, plus our Chapter 90 money, would give us a good starting fund to be able to address some very high-level road repairs in Bridgewater, of which we don't have a current plan right now. And so I think that's important to state, and this would get us there. And there's always opportunity to add to that in the future, so. Fifty million?
We have 50,000.
50 million.
50 million is what?
The top seven roads.
Oh, that's, that's the cost to repair the roads.
So just so folks understand, the 50 million is to address those roads that were identified in the capital projects plan that need significant water work, paving, sidewalk repair, the full maintenance.
Well, the 50 million is just the general funds obligation, and then it's 12 million of water and just water lines.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I can, I can understand reluctance to take a bite at the really big number. Now, we had in the proposal, as it stands before us, the $2 million amount. And if it were to be at that amount or at some lesser amount, but to be wrapped up in the override as it stands before us right now, that would provide the basis for an annual ongoing fund to be created for the purpose of rehabilitative road care. And just so the public understands, the roads that we mentioned, and we mentioned that number of six roads, those are roads that need full-depth reconstruction, including all of the underground infrastructure. Drainage, sewage, water, everything under the surface. So we're not just talking about patching potholes and giving you a nice, clean, smooth driving surface. We're talking about a full-depth reconstruction. So I'm just not sure where, if not in the override, we can expect that a $50 million amount is going to become available to us. Now, one theory is that we could do whatever we choose to do here in the override, or maybe not include roads at all in the override. And then to think about debt exclusion funding. And debt exclusion is certainly a preferable funding mechanism for capital projects like reconstruction of roads. But where is going to be the appetite to do that on top of, let's pick a number, a $7 million-plus override? In other words, if we pass the override now, within a year, is the town going to look favorably on a request for a large debt exclusion to remedy roads? I, I don't believe so. I frankly think, in my opinion, that the approach we should adopt is one of dealing with all of our needs at once, rip the bandage off, and let's get right down to what we really need to address most critically. That's been my, my take on this question from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I have Ms. McGrath, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Lindy. Ms. McGrath.
I have a question. Can an override be just for like three or five years?
No, override is permanent.
It's definitely.
It's a permanent levy of the tax floor.
Okay. So do we know that we could set up a different fund in our budget to go towards roads? Because like, obviously, they haven't done that, rather than have it on the override?
You just have to take funds from another account to move to a road account, which I don't think we have.
We don't have?
No.
All right, thank you. And one more thing. Are we going to talk about the budget for the school, or we're just skipping over that?
Well, I believe that, I mean, the budget is, we could come back to it. Again, the number is the number. I just don't know if there's anything more to discuss regarding that budget number. That's what's being asked of the town. We can't whittle that number down.
I'd like to discuss a few things.
All right, well, we'll finish the discussion on this, and we'll come back to schools then. So, Ms. Lindy?
So question through you to Mr. Murphy. Yours is kind of like the compromise. Instead of 2 million for roads in an override, you're talking 500,000 in the override, and then each year it'll go two and a half when everything goes up two and a half. I think that's a great compromise and a great way to do it. I was in favor of pulling the roads from the override because I, I thought it was better as a debt exclusion, but I think this is a good middle ground.
Any other questions regarding this? Comments? All right, the only thing I will then add is just going back, if you recall the numbers, it takes about 300,000, a little over 300,000 to do one mile of simple top coat. About 750,000, I should say a mile. A mile of a more in-depth replacement is about 750,000. And then when you're dealing with infrastructure, it's about 1.2 million per mile. So even at, you know, 500,000, it, you know, it helps, but it's not doing a whole lot. My suggestion in my numbers, I was looking at cutting it down to a million, just seeing that we could do some significant improvements in the road. And as we, if we keep that in our, you know, keep that in our budget each year, we can make some serious ground in repairing a lot of the roads here in town. And again, you all have heard the public speak to this. They, they do want to see improvements in the roads. There's a lot of roads here that have a lot of trouble. As to Mr. Chase's point, I think, again, down the line, to go now on to the debt exclusion on top of this override is going to be asking a lot. So I think if we incorporate this into the, into the override and put this as part of our regular budget, I think a million dollars would help us get a little bit further and not cost us, you know, a whole lot more in this override. I will say that, let me see, I got some numbers here. If I can find. Let's see, it's in this group. So if we were to, so basically, $2 million in roads would add basically $231.66 to the tax bill. For $1 million, it would be $112.86, and this is for a year. 500,000 would be about half of that and about, you know, $60. So for each increment of 500,000, it would cost us about $60 a year on the average home of about $600,000 to add to road improvement. So again, that's just the decision that we need to make as a council. How much do we want to put aside to address the roads that this, that the town needs? So go back to Mr. Murphy.
Just one more question. If I could ask, Ms. Greeney, how much did Bridgewater receive last year from the state in regards to Chapter 90? And then I believe there was an additional award that was given to town of Bridgewater as well, too.
Yep, that's correct. So the formula is based on the mileage of the road, not including the state, what the state owns for the major routes. So allotment has been about 720,000, 718. And then with the fair share amendment, we were awarded another 368,000, so about a million. We were given a little over a million.
So ideally, this 500,000 or a million would really be
And on top of that.
On top of that.
Correct.
Annually for roads.
So again, looking at that number, if it was $2 million a year over time, with $50 million, it'd about take 25 years to address all the roads.
Well, I think, yeah, I think I would just be clear that I don't think this will solve the issue with the six roads. I think we just got to, we have to put that on the table and be transparent. That that is not, this isn't not going to solve that issue. Not unless we, I don't even think 2 million would solve that issue, to your point, until 25 years from now. So I think there will have to be some type of approach by the town, not in the immediate, but maybe years down the road when a couple of these other debt exclusions fall off for the fire station or whatever it may be. It just, I think we just need a sustainable something that is going to help our town when it comes to roads. And it has to be a digestible number for the citizens.
Ms. Lindy?
Through you to the Finance Director, is this something that we could just bond without an override?
Yeah, sure. You could authorize to bond. I know different communities, they authorize a million dollars every year, but then it comes out of your operating budget when debt services, when the debt is bonded. So, I mean, yeah, you could authorize the town to borrow. Say you were doing one road for $10 million. So you could authorize to borrow $10 million. And then the road takes a few years or whatever to do. And then once it's bonded, then it goes on the taxpayer bill in the operating budget.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Mr. Loretty?
One of the concerns I have with putting roads as part of an override is that this council, the will of it, is to put it towards roads. However, next budget cycle or the budget cycle after that, once that money is appropriated and part of the tax levy, that money is not necessarily reserved for roads and can be used for something else. And this is why I'm in favor of having this more of as a debt exclusion or bonding it so that we know that that money is going to be used towards roads because maybe another council comes in and doesn't want to use that money for roads anymore. Maybe they want to use it for something else. So I think that's a potentially dangerous part of this option.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty. Mr. Murphy?
Just to address that, I, I believe I interpreted correctly in the charter, but there is opportunity for us to, to create a resolution and put that money in perpetuity into an account for that purpose. I also originally was for the debt exclusion to address the glaring need that we have in the $50 million. But I think the only thing that does is address those six roads and does not give us a path forward to how we're going to maintain our roads on a consistent basis. And I think that's the issue in town, too. So I was with you, Counsel Loretty. I wanted to address those six roads and make major improvements. I was just concerned that our town doesn't have a sustainable path to continue to address this going forward, too. So that's why I would suggest the 500.
Okay. Ms. Strigels?
Yeah, to echo what Counselor Murphy is saying, I was also for a debt exclusion. However, as I'm sitting here, I'm wondering what happens in five years when we have a seventh road? What happens when we have an eighth road, a ninth road? Things deteriorate over time. A road that is great now might not be great in five years, and then what do we do? So I am definitely more agreeable to the compromise solution of putting something in there because at the end of the day, something truly is better than nothing.
Ms. McGrath, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. So a resolution can be changed, right? It's not permanent. We would have to make it in order to make sure another council committee didn't change it? It's because it's only resolutions just stating that this is what we should do, not what we have to do, right?
Well, so, I don't know if she wants me to address that, but I would say that, I don't know if the town attorney wants to weigh in, but I think at any point, the council could create an, essentially, an ordinance or an order to replace the current one that I would potentially pursue for this.
I was just thinking, maybe an order would be more solid than a resolution if we definitely want to keep that really separate.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Whatever the language is, I'd be in supportive of that.
And the other thing, because I haven't really seen this until tonight. So the one that you have, the third one, where you have the 500,000 for the roads, you're not taking away, are you taking away from like other areas to get this area?
This is all new money that we're proposing for the override.
I mean, I don't know what you've taken away on the third one.
So, no, the initial line item in the first one was a $2 million line item to four roadway repairs. So he's proposing.
No, but I mean, the whole thing. You're going to go over each one so I know what's been taken away?
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's not clear here.
Yeah, no. So basically, the suggestion is knocking it down to 500,000. I'm suggesting reducing it to a million. And again, this is, this is a particular section that we're vetting out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? So I guess I'll, I'll put it in the form of a motion. I will start with a larger number and see if that passes. And then if not, we'll go to a smaller number and see if. And then if not, we'll go to a smaller number and see if that passes. I think it's probably the best way to handle it. So do I hear a motion for a million dollars for this line item to go forward on the override?
A million dollars for roads?
For roads.
I would make that motion.
Mr. Chase, do I hear a second? I'll second it for further discussion. Any further discussion on that particular motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 1 million, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that seems to be defeated. So do I hear a motion then for 500,000 for this line item?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, and second by Ms. Strigels. Further discussion on that line item? Seeing none, all those in favor of 500,000 for that line item, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye?
Yep.
Any opposed?
No.
And that one seems to have been passed. So let's keep 500,000 then for roadway repairs. Based on Council McGrath, just to go back to discuss the school committee number, Ms. McGrath, you had questions on that number?
Yeah, each year, we give like 4,000, 5,000, 5 million more. And a lot of my residents are asking me, like, the town manager makes a budget so we can see what all the money goes for, the salaries, their expenses and all that. I can't even tell the residents how much the teachers make because it's not, it's not on the budget. How many buses we pay for, what's the maintenance? You know, we do that with our cars, we do that with every department that we have. And I don't understand why we can't get that. They do have to send in a detailed one to the Department of Education. And under the Department of Education says they should send one like that to the town, not in as, in detail that we show all the funding and all that, but at least line items of what each department and each thing do. So how can I decide what is needed and what's not if I can't answer these questions?
Well, there's, I believe, I've been presented with some line item type things at the BR School Committee meetings.
Yeah, but they're all jumbled in, they're not like our town manager presents it. You know what I mean? She, you know exactly where our money's going, the way it is. And I think asking for millions of dollars each time, we should see where that money's going. I don't think it's asking for a lot, especially with the Department of Education, if you look it up, says that we're entitled to it. And I've asked, so don't say that, I've asked since February. Asked three different things. I've received a jumbled, with Rainham and everything, just all plastered line items. We would never pass that if the town manager gave us that.
No, I understand what you're saying, but Ms. Lindy, you had a question?
So earlier at Budget and Finance, School Committee Chair Tim Fitzgibbons joined us. I don't know if through you, we want, if it's permitted under our rules to ask him to come up and maybe address that question?
Well, I did ask him, and he said I would have to ask the superintendent for that.
I redirect the question.
I just would like a little more time before passing the school budget so I could get some information. Because I'm a town council, my residents are asking me questions on every district because I'm a town council at large.
I understand.
And I can't give them an answer.
Well, and actually, I'll redirect through Ms. Strigels with the Subcommittee. Is there been more discussion as far as looking at the different line items to get more information regarding numbers that we can get to the councilors as well?
Unfortunately, the superintendent and the working group made the decision to not have a meeting until the first because there wasn't any real progression from either town. We have it on our agenda now to make a decision on what we're doing. Rainham is bringing it to their town for an official town meeting vote. And from that point, the working group is really more of a strategy group to get this passed and get the messaging appropriate to both towns in an equal and level playing field. So unfortunately, we have not had a meeting since the last time of any update that I've had.
And the only thing I'd suggest, Mr. McGrath, and I can potentially call up the Chair if we'd like. But we've been presented with a number, Rainham's represented with a number. It's, you know, again, in order to get this particular number covered before the next fiscal year, we're on the process that we're in right now. My hope was, and is still, to get more information that we can get to the public and get to the councilors regarding that number as far as details. But there's been a number of presentations by the school committee on what that number means. And, but as far as the actual budgetary numbers, again, we'll have to, you know, talk to the superintendent and get you some more information.
Because I just say, if our town manager presented the budget the way they presented, we would not pass that. We have to know what we're paying, where the tax money's going. This is 6 million more. The past two years, we've given 6 million more, or 4 million more, and we have no idea. I mean, they're saying.
Our assessments the past couple of years has only been, you know, 2.5% to 3%. So I don't think that was that much money.
No, but we've given over each year. We, in 2024, we gave 6 million over, a little bit more than 6 million. And in 2025, we gave over 4 million. So we do give over each time, but we just should, I'm just saying, as, this is taxpayers' money. And they have a right to know where it's going. So, and it says in the law that we can get something like that. So I don't understand why we don't have it, and we keep pushing this down. I mean, this is important to know.
I understand, I've gone to many meetings, I know what the numbers are.
I mean, I want to support the kids, but I think we have a right to know where the money's going. That's what I'm saying. I'd like to not vote on this tonight at that one and get that information for the superintendent?
I just don't, I mean, the number is the number.
They've already sent it to the Department of Education. All they have to do is reprint it out for us.
I understand, but again, whether we get the details or not the details, the number is still the number. I don't think that number's changing based on what the school committee passed.
Well, the last school committee I watched, they did change their numbers.
Well, they went from a level funded budget now to one that asks for more needs and not their full number that they were looking for prior to.
I think whether we pass this or not, I think we deserve, the residents deserve to see where their money's going.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Ms. Strigels.
As a member of the working group, I can fully commit to you that if that is a request that you have, I have no problem voicing it at the next meeting and having it be something that got us to the finish line of, we just need this commitment from you, the superintendent, so that we can push this forward and make sure that voters feel really good about voting for this. So if that's something that you would like me to do, I have no problem doing that.
I appreciate that, so would the residents that I represent.
And that's what we're going to have to try and do between now and the override election to get that information and details out there. Mr. Lindy.
So would it help to have more clarification from the Chair of the School Committee? Does Mr. Fitzgibbons feel comfortable?
Sure.
You said you would only come up here if someone asked you to.
I don't need it, we got, I got all my answers at the committee.
Do you feel it would help him?
I'm here, it's my pleasure.
Would you like to?
Yes, yeah.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, you have to take a vote to suspend the rules.
Then I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
And it needs to be a two-thirds.
Okay, thank you very much.
To hear from the School Committee Chair.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Strigels. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I have two noes. This is at two-thirds. Three, six, eight, that's six to two. I got two-thirds. It's getting late, mouth is getting fuzzy.
75%,
That's 75%. Mr. Fitzgibbons, please, the microphone is yours.
Where do I start? Let me address Ms. McGrath's concern about millions of dollars each year. The assessment goes up to the Town of Bridgewater about 3%, sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, et cetera, which in the grand scheme of things works out to be about a million dollars, give or take. Maybe it's 1.2 one year, maybe it's 1.1 another year, et cetera. It's not 4 million over the last two years each and every year. Ms. McGrath, I'd be happy to address where those numbers came from. Please send me an email. I'd certainly love to see where your numbers come from, and I can point out where they're wrong. But, you know, I appreciate being invited up here. One of the things, and y'all have a great resource here in Mr. Lindy, who served on a regional school committee for years and who understands how school budgeting is done. We have three, we have nine, what they're called, 1,000 series. Much like the town has series of 100, 200, 300, et cetera, that have to be reported to the state. The 1,000 series is administration. Yes, we have salaries, we have expenses, et cetera, in what the state, the Department of Education defines as expenses for administration. We have 2,000, which I believe is instructional services, and that's probably where most of the money is. It might be 3,000, I can't remember all the numbers. 9,000 is other services. That's where you're generally going to find special education numbers, et cetera. Salaries go out through all of them. I don't believe that, and maybe that it's aggregated in a certain way. I haven't seen a budget for a while from the town manager. I don't believe that salaries are aggregated across all the different departments, but you can definitely see, what I remember fondly from my days on the Town Advisory Board, as 101s, 102s, and 103s. Your personnel expenses, your general expenses, and your special expenses. They're all little sublines of the department. So I've offered to meet with anyone who wants to sit down and go through a line-by-line budget with me. Ms. McGrath, Mr. Lindy took advantage of that. And that was, I believe, the superintendent's budget. No one's reached out to me since, except, I will say, there was a parent who reached out to the superintendent and asked for a line-by-line budget and went through it and made some very interesting suggestions back around, well, this seems high, et cetera, et cetera. And the superintendent, you know, listened to it and tried to understand it. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but I do want to make sure everyone understands one thing. The Regional School District sent you a certified budget number. You have, you have two choices tonight, or, well, whenever you pass the budget, to accept or reject that budget. That's what your job is. If you choose to reject that budget, that's cool. We have then, as a district school committee, alternatives, ways to, you know, come back and ask you for a different number, et cetera. And I believe this gets to Counselor Strigels' resolution later in the meeting. I just continue to say, you know, if you accept it, then I believe you have to put the number the town manager put up here and maintains the same number right across all three scenarios I see here because that's what the town manager believes needs to be funded in an override to fund the district that we certified and sent to you in our budget. So you can reject the budget, that's cool, and that's within your rights. And that it just triggers a whole different cavalcade of events that are going to happen then. So I just urge you to take the number as it is. If you're going to put an override on the ballot, you don't even have to put an override on the ballot. You can just say, we'll take the 6 million and we'll pay it out of general revenue. I don't recommend it, I don't recommend it, okay? That's why, that's why I'm here supporting this 6 million dollars and supporting what the town manager has recommended. I'm supporting what the town manager recommended for roads. I mean, I drive on them every day. I'm here supporting increasing, and this is me as a person, and supporting increased fire and public safety. I've said all along, and police, I've said all along at school committee meetings, everyone in this town has been asked to do more with less. For too long, it's time we have to realize we can only do more with more. And I'm sorry to go on a rant, but I'm happy to answer any questions if people want to ask me anything. And I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. I'll go ahead and if any council members have any questions for Mr. Fitzgibbons, while he has the podium.
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Allenberg.
Hello.
How are you in terms of contract negotiations with the union? And do you anticipate going above 2.5?
Well, we're in, I assume you mean the teachers' union?
Yes.
We also are going to be opening negotiations with our custodian union very soon. We have ongoing negotiations with our teachers' union, and I'm a member of the negotiating committee. And I'm not going to reveal our negotiating strategy in a public meeting where one of the people with whom I'm negotiating is sitting right behind me.
Right.
So, so I, you know, but I can say, I believe that both parties understand the environment which we're in right now, and I'll just say it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzgibbons. Any other questions? Mr. Lindy.
So we just went through an exercise on the roads here. We talked about 2 million, we talked about 1 million, and then we ended up at 500,000. So my question, and I'm not recommending this, I'm just asking a question. So whoever's in the room, please don't shoot me. The question is, what happens if that number was 5 million instead of 6 million? Do we have a scenario for what ifs? I didn't.
The school committee certified and sent you a budget, and it's your job to accept or reject it. However, what I will say, Mr. Lindy, is that the, if you remember, this process, it actually began last year when we approved the budget that we sent to you, which resulted in at least 24 staff layoffs from the Bridgewater-Rainham School District, okay? And Ms. King, our budget chair at the time, at the time we voted for it, and we did so over the objection of a couple of members. But we passed it, and we sent it on to you and certified it, and it was approved. Said, if we don't have significant increase in financing next year, we're going to be here again or in a worse place. As we started to look at what the Chapter 70 formula was giving for inflation, et cetera, I don't know about you, but I haven't experienced 1.5% inflation. That's what it was giving us early in the school year, in September or so. And I believe the superintendent reached out to the town manager and the Rainham Town Administrator at that point and said, you know, Houston, we have a problem. And there was, I believe, staff-level discussion into October around that. We, as a budget, Subcommittee of the School Committee had a meeting with town officials in early December's, and the superintendent essentially previewed what became the superintendent's budget in January and let everyone know this was what we would be looking for. So fast forward to January, and the superintendent, down in the BR auditorium, gives his presentation on, you know, what his budget is. And obviously, it's a needs-based budget, and we have to look at what's right for the towns, et cetera, et cetera. And then we hear from, you know, our two different towns' finance directors on what can be affordable. Well, what's affordable is going to be, and that's about a 4%, 4-plus percent increase from Bridgewater is what we would ask, we're told we could afford. And 3-something in Rainham, just the way the numbers work. It's a long story, no one wants to get into it, I'll put them to sleep. But whatever it is, that would result in at least 80 positions being let go from Bridgewater-Rainham, that affordable, what could be afforded budget. So then, the Budget Committee took, the School Committee took it under advisement, referred it to the Budget Committee. We worked hard on cutting it, turning it, you know, paring it down, paring it down, paring it down. And so at our budget hearing at the beginning of March, if you all, I think most of you were there, actually, let me back up about a week from there. We had a joint meeting with the Budget Subcommittee, the entire town council, or almost the entire town council, and the Board of Selectmen from Rainham and said, you know, here's where we are, et cetera. And I believe Mr. Lindy suggested we have a small working group that I then put together at our next meeting, asking for two members from the Bridgewater Town Council, a selectman and a town finance committee member from Rainham, and we could be a little more agile in understanding on how we can work through things. So during that budget hearing, Ms. King, our budget chair, presented what was, what would be called a level services budget, which means we just turn the page, everyone keeps their job. You know, we do the same things we did last year, prices go up, et cetera, et cetera, and we've got everything we can. And we have budget hearings for a reason. we can. And, and we have budget hearings for a reason. We, we're here to hear from people. And that was met not very favorably by the parents, as you can imagine, not very favorably by the staff, as you could imagine, but also, when we went to that smaller budget group, there was a general consensus, and thank you, Ms. McGrath, and Ms. Strigles, and Mr. Lindy for showing up and inputting to that, there was general consensus at that meeting, well, this is going to require an override, even just to turn the page, you might as well try to do something to move forward. And we took that under advisement as a budget committee, and we directed the superintendent to get to kind of a middle number, and there'd been some discussion around it. And this is, this is what is reflected there. This is what's reflected in the budget we certified to you and to the town of Rainham to say, we're trying to move things forward, we're trying to lower elementary school class sizes, we're trying to do all the things that we hear need to be done, we're trying to do it responsibly and appropriately. And then I have said, I'm not speaking now for the school committee, I'm speaking as a member of the school committee, that I can't see any way clear if this override were to pass, and I, I hope it does, for the sake of the school, for the sake of the town, for the sake of all of our constituents, is I, I can't see any way clear not to commit to having a 3% per year increase in expenses overall, you know, going forward. And that's going to be very tough to manage, but we'll have to try to make that work, because if we don't, we know the towns can only go up 2.5 plus new growth, which is about 3 to 3.5% a year. We could never count on the state over, over the last 10 years, I believe. It's been about 2.7 to 3.5% increase per year in Chapter 70 that the state's given us. So again, factor in a 3% conservative-ish number in the middle. So if, if we don't do that, what we're going to do is create a structural deficit going forward, and this is what I've heard everybody talking about, is saying, well, how do we know we're not going to be in the same place in, in the future? I, I can tell you, we'll be in the same place if we create structural deficits. We can't do that. That's on us. That's on us as a school committee. That's on, that's on you as a town council going forward on, on your side of the budget, not to create structural deficits. Structural deficits have already been created with what's happened with the roads. We, we need $50 million for roads. $50 million, plus $12 million in higher water fees to, to deal with roads, and that's just five or six of them. You know, I, I always say this, in Bridgewater, we're really, really good at kicking the can down the road. We've kicked the can down the road long enough, in my opinion. And, you know, we, we can, we can pay the piper, or, you know, don't be shocked at the, don't be shocked at the results. You can't have both.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Anything else?
No.
Yeah, Ms. Strigles, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello. One thing that, as someone who-
Counselor, I'm proud to say that.
Thank you. One thing that I've heard consistently, not only from constituents that are pro-override, but those that are a little skeptical of it, is if this is brought to a ballot, they do want to see a five-year projection, not only how the town plans to manage the funds, but how the school committee plans to manage the funds. Is that something that we can have readily available in a very user-friendly visual slide, so that people can actually see where the money goes year over year? I think it might help settle some hearts and minds that feel that the money may be mismanaged.
I, I will, I will certainly endeavor to get that done. Obviously, if I asked you as a town councillor, could you do that for me, you'd have to check with Ms. Robinson and Ms. Guarini to put it, get it put together nicely, so I have to go through the same process, but I don't see why not. I mean, you know, we can have the number, here's what we're spending. And, and the superintendent has committed, in many public forums, to not overhire. He wants to make sure every position is sustainable over the long term, understanding we can't create structural deficits. We can't, we can't overhire this year just to start laying off again next year. Who, who benefits from that? Nobody. Nobody does. And so, you know, he's very cognizant of that, and I think we can put together. And again, as I suggested to other councillors earlier today, if you could send like the, the kind of template you're interested in, in an Excel spreadsheet or something, it's a lot easier to understand what you're asking for when you put it in the way you're asking, rather than me try to interpret it and go through a telephone game of two or three people, and then send something back that you're like, no, this isn't what I wanted. You know, that way we can, we can get it done quickly and more efficiently.
In fairness, it was on my notes for the meeting that we were supposed to have last week that got moved to the first, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's cool.
Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Mr. Loretta, go ahead.
I'll also echo Counselor Strigles. That was also in my notes, and that's something I would like to see, and I think you hit the nail on the head. The people are concerned about the sustainability of the long-term, you know, viability of, of such a plan. You know, we're looking at a 20% increase in transportation this year, a 16% increase in operations and maintenance, 29% increase in fixed costs, 34% increase in programs with other districts. So I, I, I trust you and the hard work that you guys are doing over there, but how can we assure that if we do pass this, that we are going to be able to keep to a 3% to 4% year-over-year operational budget moving forward? And obviously, there's no guarantees, but I think, as Counselor Strigles suggested, that we would all feel, especially the residents who are going to be voting on this, a lot more comfortable seeing how that's going to work and how that's going to look.
If you, if you would like to direct the town manager, to direct, to direct the police chief to stop any special needs student from coming into the district, I'm just kidding about that. That drives a lot of those costs, is the special needs students, right? One, one student could drive 100, 200, $250,000 a single, you know, the, the, it's a one-on-one van transporting, you know, several miles each day, back and forth to the home with a, with a nurse attendant with the student, and that's what they deserve. That's their free and appropriate public education, which is mandated by the federal government, endorsed by the state of Massachusetts, and certainly endorsed by the Bridgewater-Rainham School District, that we have to provide every student the education that they are entitled to, free and appropriate public education. So can we do it? You know, if we see increases in certain costs, what we have to do, just like you're, you're a businessman, Mr. Loretta, we have to find places, other places we could have to cut. I, I'm just saying, in general, you know, we have to understand, we can't create structural deficits. We can't, we can't control who moves in, we can't control the level of services they need. We have to be able to work with other parts of the budget to be able to get it to a place where we need.
Thank you.
Okay. And was there any further questions for Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Well, hopefully that was useful. Thank you for inviting me up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I urge you to vote the number right in front of you.
Yes.
Put it on the ballot, and trust the voters of Bridgewater and Rainham to do the right thing. I always have, and they, they always, they always have repaid my trust in full.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. I appreciate it. So I'll, based on that, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to officially approve that number.
So moved.
And a second by Mr. Chase. I'll go for a voice vote. All those in favor of recommending that number be put on the override, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Two. Six-two. So that will approve that number on the override. So going on to the third item, restoration of budgetary cuts that was suggested by the town manager for FY '26. Now, number was $723,296.10, which, if we can put that, maybe screen up those cuts, if we have that available? The original, yes. So that number, as you see it, was a loss of a firefighter, a loss of a police officer cadet, reduction of hours to the assistant to the town manager and committees, loss of a part-time financial analyst, loss of deputy building inspector, loss of a mechanic, and a heavy equipment operator. And then variety of expenses from different town groupings, including the town council, town manager, assessor's office, law offices, H.R.I.T., town buildings, police, fire, COA, and library. Again, for a total of $723,296.10. So again, that number was put back in the override to restore all those, all those positions and expense cuts. Again, open to discussion and interpretation, and what we want to do going forward. So I'll open it up to any councillors and whether they make any comments on this. Ms. Strigles, I'll start with you.
I would just like, based on the two breakdowns that we see, whether it's from the proposed override layout, the secondary one and the third option, what is included in the second and the third, so that we're able to kind of wrap our hands and heads around what we're looking at, cutting or adding back in.
Okay. So those-
I can.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Murphy, you want to go over?
I would actually, can I make a motion to put forth a number of $422,658.33, which is the third option on the sheet I passed out, and the third option that was on the board originally? And then, Ms. Guarini, if you could go to that option to show folks what the individual cost would be. Thank you. And so, Ms. Strigles, this, this, well, I made a motion, so I guess it has to be seconded for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Thank you.
Ms. Strigles, this is what I consider a more digestible number here. Again, not accepting some of those positions. And I know I spent significant time with our town manager and finance, finance director, who can maybe explain this a little bit further about how they got there to this number, but we did, we did remove a few positions, because we don't, I, I don't feel like we can go for that full amount, again, as a digestible number for the citizens, so.
So which ones did you remove? The bottom here?
She could, I, I, I don't know if, Ms. Guarini, if you could put them side by side, but.
They can be really small numbers.
While, while she's getting there, the original $723,000 was everything we took out to be able to balance the budget with what we included for schools, the 4.67% increase. And then, from there, we looked, you know, took a much harder look at all those cuts and what ones were really important to us to, to keep in, and that's where we landed on the ones that were on the top of that list, which was the firefighter, paramedic, the police cadet, the deputy building inspector, but only part-time, and the heavy equipment operator for the highway division. It's not that we don't need the mechanic. That was originally envisioned for the building of the DPW, but we feel that we can, you know, trying to trim down even further, we can do without that. The financial, financial analyst, we think that the treasurer's office has had salary, excuse me, position adjustments and staffing that makes them able to be leaner than they were, and we may have another option to be able to fund the five hours for the person in my office that supports all the boards and committees. So that's in overview of the positions. On the expenses, we looked hard again at what were really important to the operation, maintaining our buildings, taking care of our vehicles.
So it went from-
Firearms training, IT supplies, those were the most critical things, and that got us down to the 422 number that you see.
Got you. Mr. Lindy?
I heard earlier about the library. There were originally two positions, and then-
So those are on the, the fourth section of the whole override discussion?
The new one.
Just making sure.
There were no cuts of positions to the library in this round.
Okay. And senior center is okay.
And no changes there.
Thank you.
So, Blythe, so you went from, so cutting $307,000 in expenses, and we reduced that to what number now?
422.
658.33.
Thank you.
Could I ask-
I'm just looking at the, at the expenses number, not the positions number on that.
It's the bottom, yeah, the bottom one.
Bottom one.
It's this one.
I know, I mean, I'm not talking on the total number. I'm just looking at the, the 307 number for expenses, and you reduce expenses.
Oh, that went to 113, 113.
113, 113. And what were the major things that are still kept out of that grouping? We dropped the compensation classification study, I see.
And Ms., Ms. Guarini, sorry again, could you go to 417.25 tab for the cuts, just so the folks in the audience can see what we're talking about? So we're talking about the expenses down the bottom here.
Yeah, that grouping number, the 113 number and the total. I'm just comparing that to the prior expenses that were cut of 307,480 on the, on the first round. So the biggest difference I see-
Just looking very quickly, we wouldn't fund the compensation study, which we think is important towards future negotiations and planning for HR, but, sorry, no conferences for, no extra funds for council members to go to conferences?
Oh, yeah, we go to those all the time.
I don't know each one of them exactly.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Can I ask a que, what is the council budget? Total number for the council budget?
Hold on.
I might have been at 2,200.
There are still funds in, I, I was joking a little bit. There are still funds in there for you to go to, to, say, the MMA meeting. It's just that it hasn't been spent over the last number of years, and so we decided that, based on historical trend, we would reduce it a little bit, but-
Okay. Because we don't get funding, we don't get expense money, and I think professional development, just like the town manager, should be available for councillors.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying, we just looked at it and said, we were trying to be more realistic about what is typically spent.
Mrs. Robinson, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. McGrath, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. You seem busy, so I was just skipping over you. I'm sorry. On the proposition 2.5, you have, we were going to fund four firefighters, right?
That's in the last section of what we're talking about, the fourth grouping?
So we still, on the one that, Ms., because, see, I've gotten no information, except I got handed this at the time when I came in today. So on here, I'm not sure what's being cut. So I'm asking, is it, is all four firefighters positions in, in this, the third one?
No, the four firefighters were in the fourth one, and that's in your packet on page, hold on. It's in your packet on page 163.
So these, these are three different-
Right. So that, what we're talking about now is the things we cut out of the budget in order to balance it. We, we needed to eliminate one firefighter, the police cadet, and the other ones that we're talking about now. And then the fourth grouping of funding was items that we wanted the council to be able to consider if they wanted to add anything into the budget that hasn't been able to be funded in the past. And that's where we had the four police officers, the four firefighters, two library positions, and so on.
So which one are we considering right now, talking about?
The third group, the third grouping, things that have been taken out of-
But which from?
I think, Mr.-
Is one in each scenario?
Yeah, but they have different numbers.
My motion was for the 422, which is the third one.
The 422?
Yep.
The 422. So what, what are we taking out? Are we taking out, like line item? How many firefighters are we taking out?
We're not taking out any.
So we're keeping all four?
We would, we would restore-
That's a different number.
-one of the ones we took out of the budget already.
Already.
Yeah, we're just looking at the, the original cuts. So the original cuts were one firefighter, one police officer cadet. We haven't gotten to the additional firefighter.
Oh, so we're just doing the, these?
We're not dealing with that one yet. That's, that's the other added services to me, community demands. That's where that will be located.
Okay.
So just looking at it briefly, guys, so the line items that were in the original reductions, IT was reduced from 18,9 down to 16,000. Taking care of the town buildings was reduced from 98,000 down to 42, almost 43,000. Police expenses were reduced 36,860 down to 21,860. Fire, 37,241 down to 22,241. And then, library was 30,000, expenses reduced down to 10,000. So those are the, and then the other expenses, like I said, compensation study was eliminated. The additional, the funds that were cut from town council, town manager, assessor's office, and law offices were eliminated, as well as 1,500 for COA. and law offices were eliminated, as well as 1,500 for COA. That gets us down to the 113, 113.
To Mr. Lindy's earlier question, the town council budget is proposed is 79,686, of which $10,300 is expenses.
And...
The balance is staff.
Staffing to address the...
Not us.
Not you.
Okay. Can I make a general comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Lindy.
I know there was a lot of work put into this, but I think we just pretty much passed a $6 million school budget and I think we are pinching pennies on this side. I don't feel comfortable cutting it to that level.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Any other questions or comments on this particular line item?
Well, I didn't get the comments, sorry, Ms. Lindy.
You don't want to see this?
I do.
It's, yeah, it's a big reduction compared to, we just passed a $6 million school budget.
Oh, you're saying on...
Yeah, I just think...
Are you feeling comfortable restoring the 723?
Yes.
In total?
In total.
Something in between, maybe? It's just, I just think it's like, it's a little... It's just my opinion as one council.
Sure. Okay, so we do have the motion on the floor and it's seconded. Any further discussion on this particular number? Just want to move this along. All right, seeing...
Yeah, I just need a little clarification.
Go ahead.
So which one are we working on?
We're working on the restoration of the budgetary cuts that was made for the FY26.
So these are the budget cuts that, the service impact budget cuts?
The bottom one?
The $723,000 line item. That was the FY26 cuts that the town manager made in FY26 budget. So what's being...
The fire, the police, the public works?
That's, like I said, one firefighter, one police officer cadet, one financial analyst, deputy building inspector, mechanic, heavy equipment operator, and a reduction of hours of the assistance to the committees and town manager. So that was the, that was the $723,000 number. It's being recommended to restore 422,658 of that in the override.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
Okay, so that's the compromise number that you were alluding to, instead of the full 723. Ms. Strigles?
Can I ask, can I ask Council Lindy, I know he says just restore the full number, but is there something specific that's missing from the number that's being proposed that he would like to be added in?
Not at this point. There's so many numbers, I just literally got this tonight at 8:17 PM. I really don't like doing business, getting something the night of a meeting, sorry. I don't.
That's a...
I think in all fairness, though, we have had these numbers for quite some time and I think it's best of all of us as councilors to crunch them on our own and see where we can cut, add, subtract, multiply when you need to, because there's a few different positions that have multiple people underneath that position. So I do think that time has been taken outside of this room to crunch the numbers. So even if this is the first time we've seen this, this isn't the first time that I've come up with a 7.7 or 7.8 million dollar number on my own.
I was happy with your number.
Yeah.
I, sorry, I just wanted to see with, I have no idea what they're keeping, what they're not. I was confused on that because one didn't relate to the other. But I know we've been looking at it, but everyone's come up with different numbers. I have no idea how, so that's why I'm just questioning.
Let's have a discussion through the chair, please. So again, again, as Ms. Strigles alluded to, it's been on each one of us to go through these numbers and come prepared to this meeting to discuss this tonight. So if you have any further questions to debate on what we should put in or out of this number, this is what this is all about. So if there's any other line items that you have, go ahead, Ms. Strigles.
I would just add that despite the fact that this number is on the table, I do have a number that is half of this number. So just in the event, we do need to continue working on getting the number down. I do have a number that is currently 218,195.20.
Okay. Thank you, we'll address that if we need to. Any further discussion on this number that's been suggested?
Just a question on the, I got Ms. Strigles' number there. How did you factor in the expense budgets to that? Is that something that you just went in and cut or adjusted, or are you just focused on the positions?
So I focused on police, fire, COA, library, and the town manager. Which one? There are so many tabs open. So I restored the fire position, I restored the fire expense, the police expense, the COA expense, the library expense, and the special assistant to the town manager expense. And that's where I came to my number.
So the expenses would remain at 300,000 is the original number?
No, I pulled...
No, she reduced a lot of things.
Here.
Oh. I understand, but that's a total number here, right? But you, your number is way below that one with your second...
I, anything that's on that sheet is a combined 200.
Yeah, so that's even, I mean, that's, you know, close to that.
I would just ask Council Strigles respectively, did you get the number from the town manager? How do you adjust the expense budgets for the departments without having them weigh in?
I just wanted to get to a point where we maybe had a middle ground of a low. Your number's 422, there might be something in between of in the threes that I think will just be a more digestible number for the public, especially now that we have $500,000
I'll just actually redirect back to you, Mr. Murphy. So you, these numbers that are reduced that you have in this, this 420, whatever this number is, 422 budget, these were numbers that were reduced to, you know, numbers that those departments could work with?
Yeah, I worked with the town manager and Ms. Guarini.
All right. All right, so very good. Any further questions on the numbers being proposed in this particular line item? All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote on that number. The only thing I might add, again, since it's a small line item, but, and I might ask through the town manager or the town accountant, the COA number 1,500, what was that monies for? Is that just a reduction in their, that's not an overall budget form, right? It was just an amount withdrawn from their operating budget over there?
Yeah, so they had put in some miscellaneous expenses for building supplies...
Okay.
That we talked about and took out because most of the supplies for buildings comes out of the town building account.
Okay.
They wanted their own, to order their own, some, their own supplies, so...
Okay.
We felt that we could handle that in the town building budget.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't for any services or programs. Okay, all right. Any other further questions on any line item?
Just clarification, what number are we actually voting on?
So...
I don't understand what I'm voting on.
All right.
I'm just going to say it.
So just to reiterate, so everyone's clear, the cuts that were made for FY26 came to Based on what you see up on the board, that's what we're restoring to those cuts, which would be 422,658.33. And that would be the number we would add to the override number. So it's not the full 723, but it's restoring two-thirds of those services.
Thank you.
Okay. So that being said, I'll, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
I have to say for folks in the audience that my, talking to previous councilors, this is a process that has happened in the Budget and Finance Committee in December and has taken three months to kind of parse out, you know, in workshops and meetings. I don't know how we got here, but I've spent significant time with our town manager and budget and finance director to put forth clear numbers on a budget so that we could break it down, understand it. So I don't know how else other councilors got there, I don't know what we're struggling with, but I tried to give us some foundation because it hadn't happened up until this point. And I tried to be as transparent and as open as possible so that we could have a conversation about this. Knowing the school committee put forth their budget and certified it in a budget that we're expected to approve on May 6th, which is our next meeting. And so I think this is, you know, an uneasy, messy way to do this, and I wish it hadn't been this way, but I guess this is where we're at. So I don't, that wasn't a question, it was more of a comment, but I'm befuddled right now, I don't even know a word for this.
No, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Murphy. Again, many of us have done a lot of homework on this. I too was looking to basically restore all 723,000 if we could, by understanding that we're trying to get this number down. And if you've worked with the town manager and the town accountant to come to these numbers, then I feel like these are durable numbers that should, you know, get, you know, get certain services restored. And then when we get to that last number, we can see where we go with that number. So with that, I will actually go ahead and just move this to a vote. We had a motion and a second. So those in favor of the 422, 658.33 number to restore the budgetary cuts for FY2026, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. So finally, we'll move to the last grouping, which was the added services to meet community demands. This was, the entirety of this was proposed originally by the town manager. This was a $2,186.62 number. Obviously, again, kind of a wish list, so I think a lot of us have looked on trying to see what the needs here of the town, what's important, and what we want to put forward. We've got pretty two big discrepancies here on those two second budgets there. One says 1.3, another one says 783,000, but that was in deference to road repairs. But I will defer to Council Murphy if you want to introduce any particular number.
Yeah, I would first like to make a motion for the 783,156.72. Make a motion for discussion.
And a motion and a second for discussion, Mr. Chase, thank you very much. So we have something to work with here.
Ms. Guarini, if you could pull that one up, 1417. So I think as President Perry mentioned, this is the wish list, this is above and beyond what we had budgeted originally. This is us recognizing that if the town's going to go for an override vote, that these services also need to be addressed. And so you can see the original amount, we had the $10 million amount called for $2 million in what we would consider a wish list. I've worked with the finance director and town manager to narrow that to 783, addressing the need, as we heard from the chief firefighter chief, of increased staffing from there. So to add two positions for the fire department, adding two positions for the police, who have also presented to the town and expressed a need there. We are going to address the library assistant, I know Council Lindy had mentioned that, the library had, and correct me if I'm wrong, from the town manager, a waitlist of over 100 folks that are trying to get into programs to participate in library programs. And so I felt like that was a good need that we needed to address and to help with staffing over there. They've demonstrated that they have this need and have shared that list. And also a park steward, so as we, as we have added significant acreage to our town for recreation, 37% increase needs to be addressed with staffing. And so to do that, adding a full-time park steward that can help take care of that land as well, too. And so that brings us to the number of 783,156, including all expenses for those positions.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other councilors have questions on this?
Can I see the amount? Is it four firefighters?
Can you slide that to the right a little bit? It's not fitting in the whole screen.
So this one, we've got two firefighters and two police officers in this particular version, which the other version had four, four firefighters, four police, social worker, library assistant. So that number came to 1.3. But when talking with Mr. Murphy and the town manager, he was looking to restore that 500,000 for roadway, so that, you know, so he was trying to get this number down by that 500,000 so that he could add that in, because that was one of his priorities when we were talking, so.
Thank you. Any other councilor questions or comments so far? Ms. McGrath?
I could not bring the fire department down by two, for the past three, four years they've been asking for three. And we know that the town's growing, the police officers need four, just at the schools, now they're asking for two officers just for the schools. The mental health clinic is good, the counting on agent, social worker, she's serving over 6,000 senior assistants. They have been asking since I've been on and before, Mr. Dutton said, they've been asking for a long time. So I could not vote to take away the social worker. I mean, I know everyone likes the library, but we're up to par. I know the DPW needs it, but I think it's, you know, the fire, the police, and the senior center has been ignored for a while, and I don't think we can do it anymore.
So Ms. McGrath, just for clarification, we're not taking anyone away, this is adding positions?
Well, they need four, fire department needs four.
Well, I understand what you're saying, so I just wanted to make sure you were clear on that.
I'm clear, we got two, but we need four for the fire and the police. We have one mental health clinic, which I'm glad, but we don't have a council on aging for the social worker.
I see.
You know, the proposition, I'm going by what Mrs. Robinson had put in. And I, I'm just saying what I wouldn't, I couldn't vote with this one.
No, I understand. For other few comments, Mr. Lindy?
The social worker is in there or isn't?
On this particular number that he has, it's not in there. So again, we can add things as we, as we feel important. It is? Oh, I'm sorry, mental health clinician, social worker, I'm sorry, there's one line item there. I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Defer to Blythe for that.
Yeah, it's just hard to see.
There's a lot going on over here. My only comment would be that I would be, as town manager, I would be really pleased to see one of the two social worker positions in there if the council isn't comfortable with two. I think it's a, it's an excellent, like roads, it's an excellent start in the right direction. And from working with these, all these departments since I've been here, I trust them to work together to figure out how they can best, maybe not share, but utilize a social worker clinician to support their various department efforts. Maybe not as far as we'd like to go, but, you know, we need to start somewhere. And so if, just wanted to offer that commentary.
And, on that note, if we go too high, we could risk the possibility of the following year or years reducing. Like if we did four police and four fire, we run into budget problems, we...
No, that funding would stay there for those officers going...
Because it's an override, it would be, it would be there. That's correct.
I just comment on Ms. McGrath. Just on Ms. McGrath, I too wish we could have four of each, that was the original intention. But knowing that we're adding back one of each position in our, in our restored cuts, plus two more of each here in the quote-unquote wish list, my goal was to keep the total dollar amount under $1,000 per household annually. And so, big picture, knowing what the number would be, my goal is to really keep that under $1,000 on residents, so again, it was digestible. And I think by adding back another firefighter, police, or even two more of each, would put us well over that $1,000 per household. And so that was my biggest concern, is the overall number, how folks are going to be able to pay for this. But just from a perfect world standpoint, I would, I too would support that, but...
Is it okay if I ask Mr. Murphy a question?
Uh, go, redirect, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So we'd be up to three firefighters, because we're restoring one, and then you're having two. And the police, did you ask if they wanted police officers or cadets?
Well, we're restoring a cadet.
Well, the cadet does a 911, that's about basic.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, this is adding actual police officers.
Right.
So a cadet and two other police officers?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm confused, is the mental health and the social worker combined up there, or is it two positions?
It would be one position.
And which one would it be? Would it be the mental health clinic or the council agent social worker?
The mental health clinician, social worker.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, so that was proposed by the police department. I'm just suggesting, because I think our department heads would work together to see if there was a need in another department. You know, couldn't be dedicated to another department, but it certainly could be starting down the road of providing that support. And I would just add on police and fire, I think, you know, two positions in each is a great start, but I, I won't be here for it, but you will see those department heads back next year trying to, like for the fire, it's, it's one firefighter per shift, so there's four shifts. That's how you get to four. I will count on Chief Schlotz to bring that request back, and Chief Del Monte as well.
And Council Perry, if I could just suggest, and maybe it'll be helpful to Ms. McGrath's questions and where we're at with the wish list. Ms. Greeney pulled from the Division of Local Services what it would look like with this override number per household on average. So if you could pull that up, Ms. Greeney, because I think, Ms. McGrath, this is the number maybe we could play with, with, when it comes to a wish list, you know, where we want to be and what we want to add in might be helpful from that standpoint.
Right, that definitely is a great calculator. So I can certainly just make a comment that right now, sitting as we stand with what we've approved, we're at about 6.95 million with, you know, with this line item to go. So, and just to give people some ballpark, including Council Murphy, so if we had an $8 million override, we're looking at about $920 per household on the average home. 7.5 would be 867. So it's about, like I say, a $60 difference with each $500,000 increment that you, that you make. We could have an 8.5 million, and that would be 980 on the average home, on average. So we've got a range between 7.5 and I would say 8.5 to play with here.
Just, just so we don't confuse people here, can we just talk about these numbers? And Ms. Greeney, could you walk us through, because I think you did a great job on the, on the 902 number, or the, I'm sorry, on the 7825 number that you pulled?
Yeah, so the 7825, the average taxpayer would be on a valuation of... Sorry about that. So the average tax, single-family household value is 593,000. So their tax bill currently is 7,027. With this override, based on this tax rate, it would add $1.52 to the tax rate and $13, like Mr., like Dr. Perry was referring to per 1,000. So it comes out to $902.87 for the average household for an increase.
Which works out to $75 per month, but that's the 593,992, that's the average home value, just so people are clear on that.
Correct.
In Bridgewater currently.
Correct. And there are some other examples on this. And of course, once the councilors do decide on a number, we'll have a calculator on our website for people to put their actual valuations in and see how much, you know, of an increase that, that would affect them for whatever amount it is that you vote on tonight.
So, the only thing I, again, I'll open it up to any of the councilor comments. Couple of things I'd like to just interject is, you know, the direction that we're going in is good. I, based on the presentation that the fire department made, especially when the new fire station comes online and the distance between station two, I think it's a strong necessity that they need four firefighters going forward. So I would be in favor of going from two to four on that, which would add basically 267,840 to that number.
Could we ask Ms. Greeney, could she plug that in for us, just so we can get a good visualization of what that looks like? I don't know. I think it's just helpful to see.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Yeah.
No pressure, Lori, no pressure. Two firefighters to that budget, please.
She's the one to a two.
Just over 8 million, I think.
So I'm just adding 267 to that. So that's 267,840. So that's 12, 6, 7, 8, 9, 8, 7. So we have about 8.092 million to do that total.
Can I just say something, Mr. President? The police chief was in our finance committee meeting. And Mr. Lindy, didn't he just say a police officer left? Isn't that what he said? He lost one more police officer, two?
Yes, he just left.
Yeah. So he's down how many? Remember, he said something?
So he would have within his budget to replace that police officer as it stands. We're looking to add, like I say, two more on top of...
Right, but he said he was underneath the amount anyways.
Okay. Again, but then...
No, I mean, just adding a fireman or second, you know, maybe another policeman.
Yeah. Well, again, I'm, my proposal, I've studied, I'm adding four firefighters based on their presentation. And I do have two, two police officers going forward. If I could go...
So that's an $8 million override.
See, all right, just a little over 8 million. Again, that keeps the number right around 920, 925 for a yearly increase on the average home. And if we go back to the list again, that had the positions. Thank you. Oh, there we go. Yep. So we had, we had the mental health. The only other concern I had, and I had this conversation with the town manager, Assistant DPW Director slash, or Procurement Grant Coordinator, a lot of the grants and monies that DPW received are many times handled by that DPW Director, Assistant DPW Director. And I just thought going forward, that might be, especially with, you know, how much they do take care of here within the town. And it could be a position that generates revenue for the town, if that might be one to contemplate. But outside of that, I'm in agreement with the other positions that are, that are on the board there. The only thing I was looking at adding would might be the Assistant DPW Director. Any other comments from any councilors?
So my motion's on the table, but you're...
I, well, I'll definitely make an additional motion to add two firefighters to that number. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
By Mr. Loretta.
Could we get that final number, just for that line item, all added?
I believe she said it was 1 million.
I can't read that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There it is.
Can you read that for me?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would bring the total to Ms. Greeney, sorry, one more time.
About 8.092093 million?
The total would be 8,8272.33.
Okay. So it keeps her that right.
Just one more time, please. I'm sorry, I couldn't read.
Okay. So, I mean, that keeps you right around 8 million. And that number again would be, if we plugged that in, that number in exactly for me?
I forget what I said.
It would be about 920 to 925.
What was it again?
8008272.23, 23.
Thank you. It's 926.63 increase for the average taxpayer.
And this doesn't include CPA, does it?
No.
Say that again?
This doesn't include CPA on the tax bill, does it?
No. Okay. So that keeps your goal of keeping it under $1,000. I think it adds a necessary firefighters needed once that station comes online and puts a few other positions in place that the town needs. And I think it's, you know, a responsible number overall. Any further, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, just, just a final comment on this entire process. I think this, this number addresses our glaring needs in the school. But it also, I think it's important for folks to know, we're also addressing four firefighter positions, two police officers, a mental health, social worker clinician, help in the library, and help with our parks. That, this is a huge accomplishment if we can put this to the voters to decide how this can go forward. But we're not talking about just schools. We're talking about addressing some of the other big needs that we have all talked about as a council for years. And so I think it's, it would be appropriate for the council to vote this to put forth in front of the voters to make a decision. But I think this will help really achieve some of our biggest goals that frankly, the council's been talking about for a long time.
And that tax number is 1339, if I'm reading that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
So just to give the people in the crowds a little reference, surrounding towns, their current tax numbers, Middleboro residential is at $13.41. West Bridgewater is at $13.67. East Bridgewater is at $13.67. Rockland, it's $13.67. So again, many area towns are in that, that same range of $13 and change. So this isn't certainly anything way out of, way out of whack for surrounding towns. So, that being said, with that, so I got approval on my extra firefighters or no?
Well, was there an initial motion of the 783,000?
The official number, but I just, yeah, but I did an amendment to add two firefighters. I don't think I got a...
I withdraw my motion, and you make the motion for the 1 million.
Okay.
That's fine.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion for that 1 million number. Let me just get the exact number, so we can read into the record. Let's see, 1,599.05. That would provide everything that was on the board that Mr. Murphy had, but would include four firefighters, two police officers, and the other positions that were listed. I just don't have them written down.
I'll second that.
And thank you, Ms. Regal, for that second. Any further discussion on that number? Seeing none, all those in favor of that number, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So, that total number now will definitely be 8,8272.23. Would be the number we would put forth on the override. So I will ask for a final motion for that number.
I'll make some...
And second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion on that number?
Discussion question. Ms. Robinson, can I ask you a question before you leave? Sorry. Because that was a lot to digest for folks probably in the audience and watching at home, and even for some of us as councilors, what more can the town provide in terms of information to educate folks on this number, should this vote pass tonight?
Our first step is going to be to not only put a tax calculator on the website, but also build the page that explains what all the parts are and what it would be, what the result would be, so that people at least know what they're voting on, even though, well, you need to decide whether it's one question or it's separate questions, but providing them with factual information about what it would do for the school budget, restoration of the town budget, roads, and new positions.
Thank you. Is it possible for the town to host workshops or in-person sessions so folks could ask questions? Has that been done in the past?
I would defer to the town attorney on, on the law on that, but I would say we just need to be, make sure we're very factual information. We're not advocating for one side or another.
Right.
Depends on specifically what we're looking to do. So as that time comes, I'm sure you can ask what specific you're envisioning, and we can try to figure out what we can do legally to accommodate providing as much information as you're looking to provide it.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindy?
On that, Whitman is going through a similar procedure, and they're doing town information sessions right now. I think there may be one tomorrow at 10 o'clock. I don't know if it's in person or on Zoom. It would depend on which one it is, whether I attend, but I wanted to see what other towns are doing, and I'll certainly bring that back to the council.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Murphy for all the help and being patient with us. Any questions? Thank you.
Any other comments?
You'll have to vote a motion to amend what's here, and then you'll have to vote a motion to approve. So two separate motions.
On that total override number, yes, okay. All right. So the first, I'm sorry, Ms. Loretta, please.
One point here. Paul, thank you for your hard work. He and I had a couple meetings on this. And while we made a lot of progress here, for me personally, I would just like more time and some more information. I haven't seen a sustainable five-year plan on the school side, but more importantly, on the council side, because that's the order of business that we do here, as to how this is going to look year over year with increasing costs for, you know, healthcare, retirement, all the fixed costs. And while I think this is a good step in the right direction, for me, before I put this forward to the voters, I want to see a long-term sustainability plan. And for me, like I said, I just need a little more time to digest. I think this is really great work, and I think that we're getting there. But like I said, just for me personally, I need a little more time.
Thank you, Ms. Loretta. Just to, to add to that, I mean, again, and I mentioned, I answered an email earlier today, as far as the town goes, we have a five-year capital plan. You know, budgets are worked on year to year. But as far as, you know, capital expenditures and all that, there's, you know, certainly a plan for that. And just to reiterate to the public, and I've mentioned this in some online videos that I've done, towns of similar size to Bridgewater currently, you know, population-wise, for instance, Wakefield has $125 million budget. Stoughton has $139 million budget. Agawam has $118 million budget. Milton has $133 million budget. These are operating budgets for their towns. We're operating at $80 million right now for the same basic population that those other towns have. So just keep that in mind, if we want to continue to move forward as a town and pay for the needs that we need as a town, we're definitely behind on our, on our funding for those things. So we're trying to catch up. This helps us catch up, but it's still, you know, a ways to go compared to some of those other towns. So I'll first, based, I'll ask for a motion to amend that last override consideration to that $8 million number. Do I have a motion for that number? Mr. Lindy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. All those in favor of the $8 million, $8,8272.33 override number to put forth in June, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries there. I believe we still should take a vote on bringing it forth as one question. Do I have a motion to put this forward as one question?
Make the motion.
Second. And second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor of putting this forward as one question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries there. So I believe that Mr. Allen sets us up going forward for the override vote?
You have special election.
Oh, yeah, that'll come up in a moment, yes. But just as far as the number and the procedure.
You'll have to make a motion to amend that as well, because that has the prior number.
Oh, yes, correct. Thank you. All right, let's get back to the... All right, let's get back to the agenda. And time-wise, it is nine fifty-nine. Mr. Lundy, would you like to make a motion to extend this meeting?
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock.
See if we get it done.
Second it.
Second by Ms. Strickles. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, our business will continue.
Does that mean we have to go to eleven?
We should finish the meeting by then, I'm hoping. Okay, so next-
Or earlier.
Yeah, or earlier. Next up, order OFY twenty-five dash zero five six, twenty twenty-five special election warrant relative to this override vote. And do you have that piece of paper in front of you in that packet?
Uh, maybe.
So in reference to this, we'll make a motion to amend the number listed in that special election warrant to the number just voted of eight million eight thousand, whatever the number was, two hundred and seventy-two, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Do I have a motion to amend that within this order? Thank you. Do I have a second, Mr. Chase? All those in favor of changing that number?
That was thirty-three cents, I believe, not twenty-three.
I thought she originally said twenty-three, but it's a thirty-three, all right, thirty-three cents. I'll make that notation. All right, so eight million eight thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-three cents. All those in favor of making that amendment into this warrant, please signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah, I just had a question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not sure who's, is this sponsored by you?
Yes.
It says in here on the, I guess the paragraph, I don't know if it'd be paragraph three or not, just under two, shall the town of Bridgewater be allowed to assess yada, yada, yada in real estate and personnel property taxes for the purposes of funding the operating budgets of the town and the public schools?
Okay, well, it's just a different, we can, we can take that up. We can finish the vote on the number and then if you have a question.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So all those in favor of changing the number as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So Mr. Murphy, to your question, what is it that you have a question of on that line?
It would be an open question to the council because it addresses operating budget in the public schools, but I, I think residents should know that this also addresses some other glaring needs that, like the roads or like additional positions.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I don't know how descriptive you want to be. It's basically saying the operation, operating budgets of the town, which is going to include everything that's not related to the schools. But again, through the process of advertising on, on the website, it just, just basically gets us to have a warrant to have this election. But everything, advertising what's on this, I've certainly, we put in the, on the website and maybe again, as mentioned, some educational workshops and things of that nature. But unless you want to make an amendment to the language, that's up to you.
Is this the second reading?
Actually, yeah, second reading to approve it tonight.
I'll second it if you make it.
I'm not, I, I-
We don't even know what he's making yet, so.
I wasn't prepared, but I think we should.
Well, you previously, your last order you voted said that you're voting the following question, and that question was outlined in that prior order, so I think now you're obligated to vote that question to go on to the ballot.
What do you mean the prior order, sorry?
Your prior order OFY zero fifty-five, proposition two and a half ballot question, you voted the question, right, as it's written? And you amended the amount, but you voted the question, so now it's your obligation to vote that question to the voters.
So all the different topics-
Right, you can't now amend something you've already voted. You've, you've already voted that question, so that question has to go to the voters.
Okay.
All right?
I got you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so that being said, so do I have a motion to approve the order as amended with the amount?
So moved.
Mr. Chase, second by Ms. Strickles. Any further discussion on the order? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have a resolution, R dash FY twenty-five dash zero zero nine, a resolution in recognition of Pride Month. That was brought forth by Council Chase. Council Chase, would you like to make comments on this before we take up a vote on it?
Mr. President, thank you. As the counselors know, we, we have for four previous years approved an application from citizens to do justice based upon the flag raising ordinance that was adopted by the town five years ago, and I would hope that we would stand by that and similarly approve this resolution this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Do I have a motion to approve? By Mr. Chase, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Ms. Strickles, thank you, seconded. Any further discussion on the resolution?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg.
Yes, I feel that we need to take into account the taxpayers' position, and if the town were to be sued because of a flag issue, that could impact the taxpayers with funds going to settle a lawsuit or whatever. I think that this is not a wise decision for the taxpayers, so I think we need to vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Any further comments? Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I would point out that there has never been any such prospect of litigation against the town in respect of this type of action, and-
Boston.
Once again, I've done this now on many occasions, but I'll be as brief as possible. The flag raising ordinance is designed in such a way as to take the free speech of citizens who come forward to petition the council and transform it into government speech. So whenever we take a vote here on any matter, okay, we are exercising government speech. That would be true with respect to the flag issue as well. In other words, we're converting the free speech of our citizens and adopting it as government speech, which is unassailable. The doctrine of government speech is well-established. What people think of very often in this regard is the situation that the city of Boston ran into some years ago, but the city of Boston was in the habit of, for years, allowing anything at all to be flown from city property, until one day they decided, no, that particular flag, we won't allow it. Obviously, litigation ensued, it went to the Supreme Court, and the court ruled in a nine-to-nothing decision that the city acted inappropriately in doing that. We don't allow just anything to be flown. We approve each specific application that comes from a citizen. So that, that imprimatur of approval is exactly what constitutes government speech as opposed to what the city of Boston did. Those are my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
May I respond?
Go ahead, Ms. Ellenberg.
Okay, government speech, which you say is taken from the citizens and then transmuted through the town, we can end up in a situation where someone tries to fly a flag-
And we refuse.
-that we don't want, and then upon disapproval of the flag comes the lawsuit.
What I would suggest is read the ordinance, which is fairly lengthy, I'll grant you. However, it's very explicit about the process and the types of flags that would be appropriate under the ordinance, and I think you'll see that it would rule out anything that we would consider, that we as a council would consider inappropriate or offensive or illegal.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. All right, so let's move this question forward.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. McGrath.
So I was wondering, based on my residence, I would like to make amendment at the beginning where it says whereas since 2021, where it says Bridgewater is safe haven, could we change that to a safe town? And where it says all individuals, just take all out, so it can't be interpreted of anything that, other than the LBTG. That, it's just wording, Mr. Council Chase. And it says whereas the town of Bridgewater has great strides, can we just take out, continue to face rising levels of hateful rhetoric? Because we, I mean-
Well, what I would answer, if you're asking me that question, we can certainly make an amendment, but I'll tell you frankly, I'm reluctant to censor the speech of citizens that go over to us, and, and it would constitute, in my opinion, censorship. Citizens have drafted that particular ordinance language, and I think they've done so carefully, and they've done so in respect of the fact that certain incidents of hate have been evidenced in this community, as we well know.
Microphone.
As we well know, just in recent months. And so on that basis, I, I think the language is appropriate, and I'm personally reluctant to put my words or your words or any of the council's words in place of the citizens' words.
Yeah, but could I-
So, I mean, so you're making a motion for an amendment here, so can you be more specific what you're looking to change?
Where it says Bridgewater is safe haven, it's in the very top, just to put a safe town.
Is a, which paragraph are we in?
It's the second one. Whereas since 2021.
Okay.
I'm all for the flag and free speech, but residents are also saying-
A safe haven, so what, you want to change that terminology to what?
A town, safe town.
Safe town.
And then right afterwards, where it says all individuals, just write, take the all out.
Okay.
And then I'll leave, I'll continue if you really, if this is the resident's voice, continue to face rising levels of hateful, I'll skip over that and go to the next paragraph where it says whereas now more than ever, at the end where it says for all. So it doesn't open up to people who aren't LBT, you know, they're thinking it could open, especially where there's a lot of fighting going on, where it could open up to, you know, anybody.
So you're looking to eliminate the for all at the end of that line?
Yeah, to eliminate that. That's it.
So those three amendments.
That's three amendments.
All right, so the, the motion is to change the word haven to town, eliminate all shortly after that, and in the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, to eliminate for all at the end.
That's correct.
Do you have a, do I have a second on that, on that for her?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Loretty, any further discussion? Ms. Loretty, any comments on that?
No, although I would support Mary and striking, continue to face rising levels of hateful rhetoric, I just don't find it to be necessary to have that in there.
Okay, well, it's not her amendment.
Yeah, so, that's just a comment.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the amendments? All right, seeing none, why don't we go for a roll call vote to, to address that?
The amendments, Mary's amendment.
Just the amendments, yeah.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Lundy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Strickles?
No.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Three against five. Motion fails.
So no, no edits on that. So going back to the resolution as written, we had a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion going forward? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Resolution R FY twenty-five dash zero one zero, a resolution honoring Juneteenth, which was again brought forth by Council Chase, so I'll give you the floor, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. We celebrate Juneteenth annually as a federal, a state, and a town legal holiday, and this resolution is brought forward just in respect of that fact and to encourage participation in activities in town to commemorate the annual celebration of Juneteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ms. Strickles, second, by Mr. Chase. Any further discussion on the resolution?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg.
I'm going to unfortunately take the position against this and against the Purple Heart thing because we again are playing with flags that are approved versus flags which are disapproved, so.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Seven, one, motion carries. And finally, resolution R FY twenty-five dash zero one one, a resolution honoring Purple Heart Month. Who sponsored that one? Ms. McGrath. Ms. McGrath, would you like to introduce that?
The town council proclaimed the month of May, Purple Heart Month, so it's to be resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council proclaims the Purple Heart flag will be flown under the POW MIA flag in front of the Catawba building from May first, 2025 to May thirty-first, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, and second, Mr. Lundy, that's fine. Question.
Just a quick logistical question, is that going to go up underneath the POW flag?
Under what?
Underneath the POW flag?
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible to put up the three?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes, it is.
I'm all for it.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, thank you. All right, we do not have any old business, so we are moving on to some new business. Order OFY twenty-five dash zero five seven, BAA collective bargaining contract ratification. I'll certainly refer to the town manager on this, please.
Thank you. We have reached a tentative agreement, which is in your packet, with the Bridgewater Administrative Association. It's our smallest union on the town side, is one of the five bargaining units whose contract expired last June thirtieth, June thirtieth, 2024, and so we are asking for approval to adopt that contract, and a separate, your next item on the agenda after that would be a separate order to actually fund it.
Thank you very much. Looking to send this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees, do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Ms. Lundy, second, Mr. Chase?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah?
I have a question, so you say it's settled?
Yes.
Can you tell us what sort of phrases they are getting?
So that is included in your packet, the tentative agreement that's signed by, by myself and the union, and we have an executive session after the, after this meeting, discuss it in more detail.
Okay, thank you. I thought the residents would like to hear.
All right, so having a motion, second, all those in favor sending to Budget and Finance Committees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, thank you.
Oh shoot. I lost my page.
And next order, OFY twenty-five dash zero five eight, Bridgewater Admin Association Collective Contract Appropriation Transfer, as the town manager just stated, this would be transferring of the funding for this contract ratification. Again, looking to send this to Budget and Finance, Finance Committees, thank you. Do I have a second? By Mr. Chase, any further discussion on that item? All those in favor sending to Budget and Finance, Finance Committees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, order OFY twenty-five dash zero five nine, Acceptance of Hanson Farm Conservation Restriction. Again, refer to the town manager to give us a description.
So this is the actual document, the restriction that we placed on the property once we're done with all the negotiations. This is, we received this final version from the state last Friday night. There's been one minor change I just got this afternoon about exactly of the acreage, how it's, how it's apportioned, but this is, this needs to be approved so that we can then go through with the actual purchase.
Very good, thank you. Again, looking to send this to Budget and Finance, Finance Committees.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lundy, second, by Ms. Strickles. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor to send to Budget and Finance, Finance Committees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And finally. Finally, resolution R F Y twenty-five dash zero-one-two, Resolution on F Y twenty-six School District Budget Funding. This was introduced by Council Strigles, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you so much. So this was in regards to my working group relationship with the town of Rainham. The town of Rainham put forth a very similar letter for the school committee to basically honor the results of any override vote that is brought forth and to not take appropriate actions past that, to just respect the rule of democracy in both towns. The letter is not attached in the packet. So I don't know if we can bring that up, or if we should just continue it to the next meeting, because it wasn't, it's not in the public.
Oh, I see what you're saying. In deference to Mr. Reynolds, should we postpone till the next meeting, or?
Frankly, it'd probably be wise, because it's a little unknown what.
What that letter is.
Says, just for fairness of transparency.
Oh, I agree. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Okay, so we'll postpone this first reading until the next meeting.
Perfect, awesome.
I just have a comment on that, too.
Please go ahead.
I don't know if it's relevant now that we're postponing, but Council Strigels, I don't know if you saw, but the school committee did table the resolution from Rainham last week, so I don't know if that makes a difference, but.
To me, it doesn't make a difference, only because they just beat us to it. Unfortunately, they just got their letter to the school committee before we could. I really wanted it to be a joint letter, I thought that that would have been more, more powerful, but they felt compelled to issue their letter faster. And unfortunately, we didn't have that working group meeting to kind of help facilitate that. We might have been able to get ahead of them maybe submitting it to the school committee. I might have been able to kind of put the kibosh on it, letting them know that it was going to be on our agenda. So hopefully, I can continue those conversations, because I did start a conversation with Pat Riley today about it, so.
Would you be willing to bring this up at your next meeting, at the May first meeting?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. No other problem. So again, we'll postpone that till next meeting. That ends new business. So we will go to citizens' comments. Again, I will reiterate that due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. I will recommend that you please give your name and address for the record and keep it to three minutes or less.
Hi, Lorene Powers, 51 Sunrise Drive. I just want to thank all of you, especially Council Chase, but all of you who supported both of these flag raisings. It means so much to the community, for the LGBTQ, for this increased racism that we're all aware of, for them to know the support that they have, especially for the youth. It's huge. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate it, B C C R appreciates it, and I'm sure many people in the community appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorene. Anybody else like to come up, please?
Ashley Mallard, 278 Grange. I spoke to this particular resolution at the school committee meeting, and I have to urge you adamantly to not move forward with this. And I'll be urging the school committee as well. They didn't have many people at their last meeting. But my problem with this is, I think there's a misunderstanding of if there's a joint meeting, that it would have to be the 100% override ask, so now instead of it being 10, we're at eight something. If there's a joint town meeting, a budget has to, has to come together for the towns. And what the towns were originally offering was not even level service funding. So it gives an opportunity to come together for the school committee to come back and maybe say there needs to be some level of level service funding. Because my fear is, what this resolution is doing is still taking away the right to vote within the school committee's rights legally. So it's something that's worrisome for me, and I will be speaking out against it within my school committee. But just like a group of us didn't put forth signatures forcing an override on you, and forcing an override on the community, we wanted the town council to take the steps needed to come together and pull the budget through and work with the town manager to come up with a number that was reasonable for the community. I think we need to trust the process that the school, and trust the voters, obviously, but we're cutting off an option that's legally available to the school committee with this request before, you know, we've solidified this process. And I firmly disagree with taking that, even even asking the school committee to take that option away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Anybody else coming up?
Sean Kennedy, 47 Summer Street. I got two things. The first is the, I think Council McGrath brought up some very valid points, we're not having information, which were voiced by multiple council members, not having enough information to vote on these. It's questionable whether or not that violates the charter. I think it's section two dash three, six dash three. The school committee not having that budget available in the line items to go in depth, it's too generalized. And I'd also like to comment that Council Ellenberg's motion to invoke the charter two dash seven C did appear to be in order. The first reading was the previous meeting, but an adoption is the first vote, and tonight was the first vote, so that would have been in order to invoke that and delay it. Not following the charter opens the town up to legal complications and violating national law, which is concerning. So adoption is clearly defined in Robert's Rules of Order, it's the vote, the vote was tonight, not the first reading. So those are concerning issues that we have after spending all this time this evening doing all of this. So I just wanted to bring those issues up. And thank you all for serving this year, I appreciate it, the townspeople appreciate it. It's a lot of work, you're not paid, you're volunteering. As much as some of us may disagree on things, I think you've all tried to do the best job you can, and I think the townspeople do appreciate that. So thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. McKinnon.
Brad McKinnon, 86 Spring Street. So I brought up earlier how this could be, who knows, anyone's last meeting, and if I didn't resign, it also would have been mine without the election. So I do need to say thank you to the Bridgewater residents who did vote me in when I was only 28 years old. You know, I didn't have that many gray hairs back then, but they come and they go with age, they say. Here are two ideas that I did want to do. One of them, I was too lazy to put full work in. Bridgewater was founded on June third. Towns like Whitman and Hanson, Rockland, they all have Rockland Day, Whitman Day, when they go to Whitman Park and have a celebration. We could go to Legion Field, we could have a celebration, we could do fundraisers for the Fourth of July to help them too on a town level, because we never have. And then everyone always wonders why business doesn't want to come to Bridgewater. And I'm going to tell all you guys to go look at the tie-in rates. Look at how much it costs just to go from one inch pipe to two inch pipe, and then look how much it is for six inch for fire sprinklers and all that. It's pretty crazy, to be honest with you. I didn't want to get rid of them completely, because yeah, you do need income for that, especially to help with our infrastructure, that is, as we all know, a little crumbling cookie. But when it comes to tie-ins, maybe there's some things you guys could look into, as in clean water, enterprise fund or something, where all the money from the tie-ins goes straight and only to the water. Because I mean, just Lemay, Broad Street Property and Perkins might get us, I think it's around 1.5, and I mean, well, 5A and nine, whichever ones we replace, those were 1.9 to replace. So I mean, just off the properties that are getting developed right now with those tie-in fees could definitely help if that all goes towards our water. Because yes, the schools are concerned, but the water should be everyone's concern too right now. And I just wish all you guys luck, you three and all of John, Jim, and Marley. Also wish you guys luck on Saturday. Like I keep saying online, it's great to see every race contested, it's good. And I mean, I was a little crazy online on my posts, like a Twitter page out there, when I said 33% people come to vote, but I did challenge you guys to come to the cleanup, and everyone did answer that. So I did challenge the citizens to make it a little bit bigger than 10% of the town voting, because that number is pathetic, to be honest with you. I'm just going to say how it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. Come on up.
Beryl Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive. Good evening, councilors. By now, you probably know that I'm a parent of a transgender child, because I say that often, and that I'm an ally of the LGBTQ plus community. When my son, Micah, came out, first came out to us as transgender, our main worries were for his safety in Bridgewater and elsewhere. But once I saw the pride flag flying in front of our town offices in Bridgewater the first time, and each year since then, I knew my child would be safe here, my child and many others. Symbols like these, pride flag, Juneteenth flag, the American flag, the POW flag, those old symbols, symbols like those show that Bridgewater is a warm and welcoming town for everyone. I want to really thank you for your hard work and your continued support to fly the pride flag and the Juneteenth flag again. And also for, I watched you work through this budget process, and I'm just so pleased to be, to be here and hear you and see how hard you work to find a way to pay for the things to make this town a good place to live and work in. So I really appreciate all that effort and the hard work and the sweat. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Shannon Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just have, hopefully, it's just a simple question. As far as the flags are concerned, I thought in the beginning it was decided that this was going to be something that was going to just automatically be every year. Is it something that's going to have to be come up every single time for the council? I thought it was a once and done deal now. So I'm just a little confused, because I thought it was decided a while ago that pride flag would fly, the Juneteenth would fly, and now we have the Purple Heart, which is fine. But I thought this was a done deal, so I'd appreciate it. Maybe in your discussion and comments, somebody can let me know if this is something that's going to have to come up every single year, because it's kind of a waste of time, I think it should be just perpetual. I thought that's what it was decided. So I just want clarification for that, and I thank you for everybody. Good luck on Saturday, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else?
Christine Banky, 36 Magnolia Way. I just wanted to come up here and say thank you for the hard work and diligence that you've put into, especially some of you are very glaring, the hard work that you put into coming up with the numbers you put forward to the town, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else, please, come on up.
Dr. Michael Thomas, 72, Magnolia Way. I just want to thank for all the discussions you had, you know, concerning the flag issues, going back and forth. And you can see that when you're thinking about raising any flags for any groups, be thoughtful of the impressions that it leaves with a lot of people, as you saw tonight discussing the different flags that could be flown. There are many issues that are brought up with each group that has a flag, and whether you want to have that displayed in front of town hall, it's different than having someone do it on their own personal property. Being in front of town hall, it represents all the citizens of Bridgewater, so that's something to consider. And also, other groups that may want to have their flag raised, as to your objection to that, it's going to be very well thought out, and on the advice of council, as to how you're going to select and do that with different groups. So it's not just an easy decision, one that you may feel needs to be raised here or there or any other time. You've got to consider other groups that have a, other significance to their.
No, it's okay.
State groups, whatever they have, and support, and how you're going to either support or reject their request for having the flag raised. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Go once, go twice. Again, thank you very much, everyone who came up to speak tonight, both in the beginning and at the end of the meeting. We greatly appreciate that and hope to see you all come on out this Saturday for the vote. We will move to council comments, and just let the council know, we do need to go to executive session afterward. So we will start with Ms. McGrath to my left.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, First Responders Day is this Saturday, and our CERT team will have a table there, so I'll be working there all day, so I'll see you then. And thanks for everyone coming out, I think it was a good discussion.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Ms. Strigels.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that it, the irony is not lost on me that three of us were in the same position this week, waiting for an election to take place, and I understand the angst of all of that, but if this is the last time that we sit together as a group of eight, I will say I am honored that I got to sit amongst all of you and do some really great work for the town of Bridgewater and make some real, hopefully lasting change that will benefit not only our kids, but our public safety and all of us as individuals. So I'm just very grateful that I got to sit amongst the three of you.
Thank you, Ms. Strigels. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to thank all the citizens who have come forward, not just tonight, but in recent weeks, to voice their concerns and opinions, particularly with respect to the override, but just in general. But I think we certainly covered a lot of ground this evening. I think that we've actually arrived at a very good place with respect to the override. I frankly am very supportive of it, and I look forward to more discussion about it, frankly, as we move into the couple of months ahead. I'd also just like to remind voters that the town election is scheduled for this coming Saturday, at the, voting to take place at the middle school. And the hours, I believe, are from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I hope everyone can bear that in mind and, and do plan to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Lindy?
So I also want to thank all the citizens that have been here week after week and have participated and commented on different things. I certainly agree, I won't repeat them all, but what Council Strigels said, I totally concur with. And I just want to thank folks that came out for the cleanup. Thanks to former councillor Brad for helping us to get it organized. Pat Neri did the NIP, you know, the Bridgewater Sustainability Committee and others did the Iron Works, and, and, yeah, Steve Black, who's the steward there. And then we had the Town River Landing. I think we had way more people than we did last year, so that's a good thing. After that cleanup, I do want to point out to people, I'm happy to hear what citizens have to say at these meetings, but the people that come into this town from outside of town that want to fly flags, like the Palestinian flag that was flying in the center of Bridgewater on Saturday, made me sick to my stomach. We are here to deal with local issues, I don't want to be a foreign policy community dealing with national issues, and there are certainly two sides to that story. So I was pretty upset that I saw that in my own town, and I hope never to see it again, to be perfectly honest. Thank you.
Ms. Lindy, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you to all my fellow councilors for tonight, I thought it was also a good discussion, and I'm glad we all got to a place where hopefully a majority of us feel comfortable with moving forward a number to the voters. I did want to mention, and I feel like it got lost a little bit, given the agenda tonight, but I'm excited about our new town manager, and I'm glad we got to a place where we got that contract finalized. I'll work with our acting town manager and incoming town manager on possibly setting up some welcoming events for him once he starts in his first couple of weeks, just so folks can have a chance to again meet him. And so I'll work with him and our acting town manager on that come July, which I'm sure will come quicker than we expect. I also wanted to just thank the folks for Cleanup Day. I actually wasn't able to make it, I was in class all day, but I did send my two and a half year old son to clean up, and so, while he's not paying for this override, he's definitely going to earn his keep around here. And so thank you to the folks that organized that and attended that as well. And then finally, also an encouragement to attend First Responders Day. A lot of work has gone into the Town River Landing by the Fire for Effect Foundation, and it looks incredible down there, and they've done an incredible job giving back to the town. And so not only do we pay respect to the first responders, but to the folks that have worked hard down there to put that, that park together, opportunity, I guess I can't, I shouldn't use the word park, opportunity together for citizens to attend and have a place to go. And so just want to encourage folks to come out for that. And again, echo the statements from Council Strigels, who said it best in regards to the three councilors who are up for election and the incoming folks. All the best of luck, it's been our pleasure to serve with the three of you, and I hope that folks come out on Saturday and vote and make their voices heard as well, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Ellenberg?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who comes out, thank you to the people who are watching at home. Thank you for your participation. And I think that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Ms. Loretty?
Yeah, thank you to this current council for granting me the privilege of serving with you all for the last few months. It's been fun. I really appreciated the experience, and I'm looking forward to everybody turning out to the vote this Saturday. I hope to see you all there. And also encourage everybody, as it's already been stated, to come to First Responder Day on Saturday. I'll try to hop over there and then hop back over to the polls. So I hope that in some capacity, I get to see all of you on Saturday.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty. So in closing, again, I wanted to thank all the council members for the wonderful discussion this evening to get to that override number. I think, you know, a lot of you did some great homework, and I think we got it to a responsible number that not only helps the schools, but will get some services in the town that are desperately needed. And I think, you know, the process, as bumpy as it might have been here or there, I think was a good, you know, process to get to it. And we'll get that number, you know, in front of the voters hopefully in June. We'll take the time between now and then to educate, to get the information on out. We'll get the website up and running with that information on there. And I think hopefully it's a number that can be affordable to most to get the services that both the town and the schools need. And again, thank you to Brad and those that organized the town cleanup. I participated at the Iron Works Park myself, along with Counselor Lindy and a bunch of Lions. So just thanks to all those that came out to help on out. I will be at the polls myself on Saturday, and I wish Ms. Loretty and Fire Effect a great turnout for their event. Unfortunately, it looks like rain, as was mentioned earlier, so hopefully that doesn't dampen people's spirits coming out to vote as well as going to check out that event. But I hope everyone comes on out. And again, the election is this weekend, so please come on out, everyone. Let your voices be heard. Finally, I do want to, as, you know, my last meeting as president, want to thank all the council members for working with me this year. I think we did a good job. I think we accomplished a lot. We certainly did, you know, a lot of work in a variety of areas, including finding a new Town Manager. And I want to thank my vice president for chairing and doing a lot of that. But we got some good legislation passed. We got a new Town Manager in place. We're working on an override now that they're cleaning up. So quite a bit was done within the past year, so I thank you all for the support and good working relationships with me. And we'll see what happens after the election. But with that, I'll ask for, going into executive session. So I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Bridgewater Administrative Association as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
And second by Ms. Striggles. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
In favor, zero opposed.
So we are now adjourned, and we'll move into executive session. Yeah, two minutes before the meeting.
It's just the approval, so, yeah, you know, you'll go home.